Good evening. It is Tuesday, November 17 at 6:37. This is the Groton Town Council Committee of the Whole Special Meeting. And councilors present are Bordelain, Baumgartner, Franco, Heed, Melendez, Zepary, Granatoski, and Aubrey is having technical difficulties, but she will be joining us. Councilor Parker notified that she can't be with us this evening. So we are at seven councilors presently. We should be at eight shortly.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Crouch is having trouble getting into. I'm going to try sending him information the way I did to the other person.
Thank you.
Just don't call me for a minute.
Okay, certainly. All right, very good. So we are at seven councilors at the start of our meeting this evening, and I expect Councilor Aubrey to be back in shortly. All righty, very good. Calendar and Communications will start with Councilor Baumgartner, please. Councilor Baumgartner, do you have Communications this evening?
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I was muted. Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. Councilor Franco, do you have Communications this evening?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Councilor Heed. Communications?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, sir. We will go to Councilor Bordelain.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilor Melendez?
Nothing to report.
Councilor Zepary?
No report.
Thank you. And I don't see Councilor Aubrey back. Let me just check and see if she's in attendance, and I can move her over, because I know she had. She is here. Hold on one second, please. Councilor Aubrey? Councilor Aubrey? Not yet. Okay, we can come back. I know she had a beautification committee meeting last night, and I wasn't sure if she wanted to report out on that. I will jump in at this point, and if Councilor Aubrey comes back in and wishes to report, that would be appropriate as soon as I'm all set. So this evening, I attended, or last evening, I attended my first meeting of the Groton Sail Foundation, and we have the group with us tonight, representatives of the group with us tonight, so I will let them do the reporting on that particular item. And I believe Mr. Burt is working. Are you back, Mr. Burt?
I need another moment, please. There are some questions where a couple of people are having trouble.
Okay. So we, our minutes are not available at this time. So we will have two sets of minutes next time, because they were quite lengthy from the last meeting. So at the next meeting, we will be approving two sets of Cow minutes. So that leads us to trying to give Mr. Burt another minute here.
Okay, I think I've said. Sorry. I have not heard from Councilor Aubrey, though, so I don't know what's happening with that.
Well, she is in, but
Oh, I see her there. Okay.
She can't speak, so I'm not quite sure. Councilor Aubrey, can you hear? Okay. Mr. Burt, did you have a report for us, sir?
No, just to mention that staff and I will be meeting down at at the Port Rachel Marina later this week, so I'll give you a report after that meeting.
Thank you.
Oh, there she is.
Yeah. Councilor Aubrey, did you have Communications tonight? Hello. I'm glad you were able to connect. Did you wish to?
I'm on my iPad now.
Okay.
Yeah, I did want to talk about the beautification meeting. We did have a meeting last night, and we've asked Cindy, 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 Cindy. What's her last name?
Port.
Thank you, to kind of reorganize us, take over as Chair, and get us back on track. And we had a very, very good meeting, went over a lot of things that we've talked about, and come back to our initial project, which was going to be at the golf course, and we'll be working on that. And we went over financing, and we're pushing forward. There'll be a calendar going out for when we'll be having the meetings, and we're going to be ready to get to work in the spring.
Thank you, Councilor Aubrey. All right.
Thank you.
We have some new business this evening, and we have quite a few guests with us this evening. And so as usual, we usually put the items with guests at the top of the agenda. And the first item is 2020-776 Groton Sail Foundation, and this is on page two in your packet. And we have several guests this evening, and I wanted to give you just an overview of what we're doing with the Groton Sail Foundation at this point. Councilor Bordelain, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Thank you. It was, I was waiting for Leon to finish, but I wanted to ask the town manager a question.
I'm done.
Councilor Bordelain has a question for the manager. Mr. Burt?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted some update on COVID, since we're in the midst of a climb here. Do we have any reports or any information?
Nothing, nothing new, other than I put out some information on Facebook on Friday, the latest numbers. We dipped just slightly, but we are still in the red. But nothing else at this time.
And is there anything else that is going to be coming down? No other changes as far as any town implementation, as far as restrictions? Everything that's currently going is going to stay as of right now?
As of right now, but constantly monitoring.
Thank you.
So we are back to item 2020-776 Groton Sail Foundation. And with us this evening, we have several representatives of the foundation. And just as an overview of the purpose for this evening, they are going to provide us with an update on their calendar, their kind of schedule that they're projecting to use. And they also are asking for some consensus from us this evening. We're not going to be voting on anything this evening, but the manager Sorry, can you mute? Thank you. That's okay. So the manager had sent out some emails with a couple of memorandums of understanding that the foundation committee will go through and explain the difference between the two. And then at the end of their presentation, you'll have the opportunity to ask questions about the projected timeline, the project, and anything about the MOUs that you might wish to ask. And then we'll be looking for some consensus tonight. Okay, we're not looking to vote, but for consensus. And then we will have this on the agenda again, once we've decided which track we want to take. It will be back on in December, early December, to get this through, so we can keep to the timeline. So having said that, with us this evening, we have quite a few people. We have Admiral Paget, I believe, is here. We have Mayor Galbraith. We have Mr. Frost. We have Mr., is Mr. Streeter with us this evening? Let me see. Yep, Mr. Streeter is here, Mr. Ofinger, who some of you may know. I think that's everybody from the Sail Foundation. So Mayor Galbraith, did you want to take the lead on this, or is someone else going to take the lead?
This is John Paget. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir. Thank you so much.
Okay, good. I think, let me start off. About six years ago, the mayors of Groton, City of Groton, and the town of Groton established some communications with the Navy, expressing some interest about getting the sail and the rudder of the submarine USS Groton to use as part of a monument to celebrate the submarine capital of the world, the men and women in the town of Groton who support the shipyard workers and the designers and engineers, electric boat, and just to celebrate generally the submarine force and its association with the town of Groton in general. As a result of that initiative
I'll turn it off there for a second. Mr. Paget?
He's muted.
Can I, can you hear me?
We can now, sir. Yes, thank you. We lost you for a minute, but you're back now.
Okay, well, did you get to the part where Bill Vogel was stood up? Okay. The mayors of the town of Groton, the city of Groton, about six years ago, got in contact with the Navy and established that that we could get the sail and the rudder of the USS Groton from the Navy to, for use as part of a memorial for the town of Groton as the submarine capital of the world, celebrating the men and women of electric boat who designed and built the submarines, also clearly the location of the submarine base and all that. So it seemed like it was a good memorial notion. Correspondence ensued, and as a result of the Navy basically approving the concept, Bill Vogel was asked to stand up a foundation to execute the plan to get the memorial built. Bill was the Commissioning Commanding Officer of USS Groton, and he put together a put together Board of Directors to support him. And they started off, the first item of business was to find a location to put the memorial. That actually was quite problematic, and very little progress was made for about four years. And then sadly, Bill Vogel passed away about a year ago. And so last spring, I was asked if I would take over as the Chair of the group. I had formerly been an advisor to the group. We have, we have arranged with the state, with the help of of the town manager, to have the, some property transferred to the town of Groton that the foundation will pay for. That will be state land given to the town of Groton, paid for by the foundation. And then, but we, but we need to have an agreement with the town of Gro, or with the elected officials. We need an agreement to allow us to say, yes, we're going to be able to use this property to put the, to put the monument there. Chad Frost is with us this evening, and he is going to talk about the how the design of the monument will go together. But basically, once you guys approve that we can execute the plan for, to per, for us to purchase the land that's given, and give it to you, once that's been completed, then we, we can contact the Navy and go forward, having established that we have a site. Then basically, the broad brush strokes are that the Navy will help us by transporting all of the parts and pieces of the submarine to Peter Legno's work site location in Groton. And then it will be it will be made environmentally compliant while it's, while it's, all the remediation will be completed at the Legno site. There will be, there's been an arrangement made with Electric Boat and with Peter Legno's group to share on the workload. We expect to be able to get some volunteers to, to help with that, so that it's not completely money that we have to pay. And then, once the preparatory work is done, we'll have the site prepared, and then after the site is prepared, and we basically have the large pieces of the monument put together, we will truck that down to the site near the library and assemble, and have that assembled. Couple of points. If, we anticipate that if we can get approval early in the year from, from you folks, that we should be able to put together a sufficient amount of, of a plan with sufficient granularity to meet the criteria that the Navy would ask. And then with that in hand, we can execute, starting probably in the spring of 2021. And given the rough timeline that we put together so far, we think that perhaps Memorial Day of 2022 might be a bit optimistic, but we think that sometime during the spring, the summer, the fall of 2022, we ought to be able to have a dedication of the memorial. And then that would, then that immediate action would be complete. The intent, and the absolute intent is for this to be zero impact on any taxpayer, taxpayer or the city or the town. The foundation intends to raise the money to get the get the monument built. And after the monument is built, we will turn over an endowment to sustain the monument indefinitely. And, and that's really what the, the difference in the two MOUs is, is one of them has us, the foundation staying active for many, many years. My opinion is, and the one I would prefer personally, is it, you know, once it, once the work is done, we establish the endowment, we turn the money over to the town, we'll go ahead and dissolve the foundation. Let's see. Chad Frost is on the line, and I think each of you has been provided a copy of the, of the, of the design of the memorial. So I'll let Chad talk a little bit about that. Chad, Chad's company will be the one that actually does the work from building up the monument.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Frost?
Good evening. This is Chad Frost from Kemp Frost Landscape Architecture. Good to see all of you virtually again, councilors.
Mr. Frost, do you want to pull up the, the plan, or do you want me to pull it up?
You can. I was just looking at what you had in the agenda, and if everybody was looking at that, I was just going to talk to that pretty briefly. I was going to try to keep it fairly brief, since it's just a recap of what you have seen previously.
I just threw it up on the screen, just so people at home can see it.
Perfect. Thank you, John. So this is just a site refresher. We have discussed this with you in the past. We have not really changed anything substantial at this point. As, as Admiral Paget alluded to, a lot of those details are yet to be forthcoming. Once we get through the MOU, and the committee is certain that this is the right place and all that, then, then we'll engage and go into all those further details. But just to refresh, I'll start up at area number one, which we are calling the Design Plaza, the memorial that will celebrate the design and the construction. So that's that area, and we're also labeling that as an alternate at this point, not the concept, but just that location from a fundraising perspective. If we're not able to reach all the funds, hopeful, then the submarine design plaza would get integrated into the Design and Construction Plaza as part of the Plaza Number Two, further down on the plan. But in concept, what we'd like to do is connect the existing memorial plaza that's up between the parking lots, between the library and the senior center, design that, the submarine design plaza that celebrates the design of all the submarines. Obviously, we'll highlight on the USS Groton. What we're showing there is the seal of the USS Groton and pavers on the ground plane, and then possibly a pergola overhead that's the size of the diameters of the hull. And then that would begin the walk. We could do some memorial pavers, which are already out there. Those pavers continue across. We could do a raised pedestrian crossing so that we can slow vehicular traffic down as they come in through and proceed to the library. And then we come down to the, really the main part of the memorial. That's Plaza Area Number Two, which is the Design and the Construction Plaza. This is where we locate the sail of the USS Groton. And we put a plaza all the way around it with historical markers. We have the sign that you can read from the road as you're passing by, going in either direction. And we have a large memorial wall that, right now, we plan to have internally lit with all sorts of historical interpretation around on it. So it's, you get some of the calming effect from the road noise, and you get the, the verticalness to be able to display the historical signs, so that everybody can read more about the full design and construction of submarines. As is, I think, hopefully fairly obvious, the overall concept is to truly recreate the full size of the USS Groton in a planted berm, and so that the green areas to both the right and the left of that Plaza Two is the full size of the USS Groton. We plan to do that as an earthen berm that's implanted to simulate the full size of the boat, because one thing that, although we live all of us in the US, in the capital of the submarine capital of the world, rarely do most of us civilians get to actually see one up close and personal. We see pictures, and we see them from a distance. But to be able to really get close and see really how massive they are, how people live and work within them, is kind of a unique opportunity. And so to be able to really show the full size and scale of that on the site, we thought was, was important. As we then kind of proceed through the memorial, to the left on the plan, we go through what we're calling the Family Garden, or the Underway Plaza, excuse me, number three, the Underway Plaza, which is the long walkway to kind of simulate what it's like when, when submarines are out and on deployment, that they're connected still back here to home, but they're kind of out and alone, and where the families here are separated from the sailors out. And so we intend to plant trees down there. That, that long alleyway will help to kind of accent the feeling, and then also be able to put some milestones of, of major, major milestones, both from the submarine operations throughout time in Groton. That walkway connects all the way down to what we're calling the Family Garden, which is the area number four, which is around the rudder, where we think it's very important to celebrate the families of all of those that are both designing and constructing and serving aboard the submarines. They're an integral part to the, the safety and security of our country, and, and we think it's worth honoring the family portion of what goes into submarines. And then connected to that is then the walkway that we would do back to the Library Plaza, which we are calling the Community Connection Walk. We really want to celebrate what EB and the submarine base means to Groton, and the impact that that is, you know, those industries have made to Groton, and really, you know, we are the submarine capital of the world, and celebrate what all that means and its connection to Groton. So that's, again, the short synopsis. You can kind of see the property lines there. There's the, that we're proposing to move with DOT, that John is highlighting. The existing right-of-way that we've talked about before is very, very wide. It was an old remnant of DOT, and they've agreed to give away, most of it, I shouldn't say giveaway, to sell to the, to the town through the nonprofit, the land that's an excess land that currently the town fully maintains anyways. And now that, we think this would be a great location for the plaza, a huge landmark for the town, and, and really a big component of placemaking within the town. This will be something that residents and visitors alike, as you drive by, will definitely see and definitely remember, and help to create that sense of place mentally for all those who pass by. And with that, I guess I can turn it back to John.
Thank you, Mr. Burt.
Thank you.
So as, as was mentioned by the mayor at the start, there are two MOUs that are, have been prepared by the, by the town attorneys. And either of them, I have been authorized by my board to sign whichever one you prefer. My preference would be the one that allows us to dissolve the the foundation upon completion. But whatever, whatever you feel is the, the best for the town is certainly what we'll do. And as I said, if we could, if we could get them, get it solidified early in the next year, then we can go to the Navy and start the ball rolling. So subject to your questions, that's, that's the end of my talk.
Thank you, sir. All right. So then, what we are looking for from the council is consensus on which MOU. But do any of the councilors have questions for Admiral Paget or for any of the other members?
Mr. John, could I, could I throw one thing out real quick?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Just, just to mention on the, not the version that has the foundation ceasing, ceasing to exist after a year, but the other one, where it says permanent easement, it says permanent easement, but if you read it in there, you'll notice that if, for some reason, the monument's not being maintained well, we could dissolve the permanent easement and require the funds to be turned over at that point. Or, you know, there's, once that's built, if the foundation, even with, if we went permanent, the foundation could choose to dissolve at some point. It'd really be out of our hands, and then they would have to turn the money over. So I just want to point out, it says permanent, but it's not, there are some out clauses on it. The one advantage of that is it does allow us a little bit more time for fundraising, assuming they went beyond one year, but.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Burt. So we'll open it up to council questions. If you have any questions on the plan itself, or if you have any questions on the two options of the MOUs, that way we can arrive at some consensus later on. Councilor Heed?
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Mayor, Madam Mayor. Yeah, the, the plan is beautiful. I'm very happy to see that this is finally coming about. My question is, where do we stand in terms of how much has been raised and how much has yet to be raised?
We have about, we have a couple hundred thousand dollars to, so that we can cover the cost of, of buying the property. Matter of fact, I mean, I have the treasurer's report this second. We have $225,728.28. We have not done any serious fundraising, because frankly, we didn't have a site, so we didn't have a thing. So it was kind of hard to go forward saying, hey, give us some money, and maybe we'll be able to do this thing. So we've talked with some fundraising, excuse me, fundraising professionals. We've winnowed down to, I think, the one we're going to pick. And after we get approval from you folks, and get, get permission from the Navy to start the work, then we'll start in earnest during the fundraising. My windage estimate is that it'll probably, we'll probably need to raise about $2 million in order to get, get all the work done, and also to establish the endowment. But I, and I, and by, by most accounts, that's a doable do. One of the first things, however, that we need to do before we start fundraising is have a sufficiently rigorous plan to allow us to attach a budget to it. And so that $2 million is windage on my part, but that's, that's the ballpark number.
Thank you. Do other councilors have questions? Councilor Aubrey? You're muted, Councilor Aubrey?
I can't hear.
Councilor Aubrey, you're muted? Can you unmute?
I'm trying. There we go. Sorry about that. I was just wondering what the cost is for the piece of land that the submarine pots are actually going to go on to.
The sale price from the state, this is, this is John. The sale price from the state is $91,500, which would be paid, of course, by the foundation. We'd have this MOU in place. They would have to transfer that money to us, and then we have to be the ones to purchase the land.
We don't think we can get it gifted, huh?
No. We, we tried that. They actually have rules in place now to prohibit that. And Chris, Representative Conley, you can, have tried for us, too.
Thank you.
Did you have other questions?
No, I'm sorry. I said, thank you. I'm all set.
Sorry. Any other councilors have questions? So are you clear, are we clear on what the two So are you clear, are we clear on what the two options are as far as the MOUs?
Of those on our information?
They were sent out, I believe Mr. Burt sent them out last evening. And really the two choices are, do we want the foundation, the Groton Sale Foundation to remain in existence, or as Admiral Paget suggested, they would prefer that they dissolve after, I believe, a year. So we have to come to some kind of consensus as to what we want and then they will prepare the formal MOU for us to vote on next time we're here. Counselor Oberg, go ahead.
So if we set it up that the money was going to come to the town, could there be provisions put in that, that that money only be used for that particular thing? I'm, I'm sure that they would, but it's just important because we have had some things in the past that have disappeared.
Yes, that's part of the MOU, either version of the MOU, any money would be set aside and dedicated for those purposes.
Well, you know, they've been working on it. So whatever is their recommendation from that, I would suggest that we go with their recommendation versus our making one. But I, I'd be comfortable either way. I think it's a wonderful project and just want to see it moving forward.
Yeah, to reemphasize that, in the MOU, it says that the funds will be distributed to the town as beneficiary and the funds shall be thereafter subject to town management and used exclusively for maintenance and care of the monument.
Thank you.
I, I would be inclined to concur with Counselor Oberg in regard to honoring the wishes of the foundation because they have done so much work on this. And if they feel it best to dissolve after a year, then I would certainly be willing to honor that. Is there anyone that else would like to speak or that has an alternate view that they wanted to share so we could have discussion? Or are we prepared to go ahead and let Mr. Burt know what our consensus is? Counselor Oberg, I'm going to see if anyone else would like to speak first, please.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, no other counselors are looking to speak on this. All right, Counselor Oberg, you have the floor.
I assume you're meaning a year after the completion of the work.
Well, yes, a year after the ribbon cutting.
Okay. Well, I, I would hope that the council could vote and we could move forward on it this evening.
Well, we're not voting this evening. We'll be voting this time, but we just, we just need to have consensus tonight. So is there any objection to honoring the will of the foundation committee in choosing the MOU that would call for their dissolution after a year from the ribbon cutting? Any objection to that? Okay, seeing none, that looks like we have consensus, Mr. Burt. The council is willing to honor the desire of the Groton Sale Foundation to move forward with the MOU that will dissolve the foundation a year prior after the ribbon cutting.
Okay, we'll put it on the December 8th town meeting.
Thank you so much. And thank you, Admiral Paget, and everybody on the committee or the foundation committee for coming out this evening. We appreciate it very much. Thank you for all your work.
Well, thank you very much for, for inviting us and keep up your good work. And as, as I heard on the radio, stay positive and test negative.
Thank you, sir. Good night, everybody.
Thank you all.
All right, we'll give them a minute. Thank you. Give them a minute to get situated before we move to our next item. And we still have a lot of people here for our next item. And that is the first step in our discussions on short-term rentals. Okay, so this is page four in your packet. And I'm just, while everybody's getting settled in, I'll just tell you what, how this is going to proceed and what we've done so far. So a group of us convened and we put together a whole bunch of resources for the benefit of the council. And we have people with us this evening that represent many parts of town. We have people from the city, from Groton Long Point, from Noank, from Mystic. We have people that use their houses for short-term rentals. And we have people who are opposed to short-term rentals. So we have a good mix of people here this evening. And you all have, you had sent to you in September, a packet of information of just the resources that we had kind of called together. And it was sent again on the 12th, and it was sent again in your packet for this evening. So there's much material out there that I hope you've had a chance to look over in advance of tonight. And what I'd like to do tonight, I don't see us reaching any kind of conclusion this evening. This is way too big of an issue for that. But I did want to give the council a chance to talk to and ask questions of all the people that the working group met with over summer. Okay, so what I'd like to do is to give whichever members of the working group who wish to speak a couple of minutes. We can't have really long presentations because there are so many of you this evening. But know that this will be only the first step in that we will be revisiting this item again. I assume that the council will want to look at this. I could be totally wrong and the council may say, no, we're done with this. But I have a feeling people are going to want to explore this a little bit more. So tonight will not be the be all, end all. I'm not expecting any decisions this evening. I'm just expecting the council to have an opportunity to ask some questions and maybe ask for more information on particular items of concern to you. Okay, so I think everybody's in now. It looks like most people are in. So who we have with us this evening? We have Mayor Hedrick from the city of Groton. He was kind enough to join us. We have Mr. Bradham, Mr. Crouch, Mr. Davis, Ms. Kerschner, I believe Ms. Kerschner's here. Yes? Mr. McCormick, Mr. Munn, Mr. Dunn, and Ms. Lino. And I believe that's everybody. Is that everyone, Mr. Burt? I believe so. Let me just look at the second window. Yep. So again, we have a mix of people here. And I'm going to, Mr. Dunn, would you like to start off just with, maybe if you could give us just a quick two or three minutes of how you came to be involved in this and a brief synopsis of your view of this?
All right, thank you. I think the, I am from Noank and I don't know if we're the, you know, as part of the community, with certainly the village and probably the next closest is probably Groton Long Point and Mystic, where there's an increasing amount of short-term rental activity. Historically, it was primarily hosted rentals, people trying to offset the, you know, the tax burdens, et cetera, to, to keep a home in the, in the village. But more recently, there's been an increase in, I'll call it, commercial activity, where the purpose of the short-term rental isn't to retain a home, but is to profit in a residential area, that property. What happens is, and actually, the COVID environment originally slowed it down and it's, and also it's accelerated, where people actually taking sequential, you know, rentals, et cetera, in keeping it more active and more of a, a problem situation. So there's several aspects that's of concern. One is the commercialization in a residential area. The second is associated with that, you get a turnover and a churn of individuals coming in and out, and then the inevitable congestion because of the extra cars. And then you have parties and events, which, you know, there's certainly a significant objection to when they do get loud and noisy and don't cause concern. You've probably seen a number of articles in the newspaper in surrounding communities that have had problems and have had litigation. So it seemed important that rather than waiting until it's a significant issue, is addressed at ahead of time where we have some time, I'm talking about Noank now, had some time to analyze, review, work with the local community and see what, you know, what are the options that should be there. As a community, there was an agreement to pursue a short-term rental zoning change. That's in progress. So there's not any formal approved zoning change as yet. So I think that, you know, so I'll stop there and see if there's any questions. They give a very high overview.
Okay, so again, I just want to reiterate, what Mr. Dunn was speaking of is the actions being taken in Noank. And Noank has separate zoning. So what he's speaking of is not any action that the town has taken at this point. He was referring to his capacity in Noank. Is that correct, Mr. Dunn?
Well, I'm, I'm not representing the zoning, the Noank zoning commission here. I'm representing myself as a resident of the town who lives in, in, in Noank. But you are correct that that activity is ongoing.
Thank you. So when he was saying there was ordinances and all that sort of thing, that was not any reference to anything that the town has done at this point. So thank you for setting the tone, Mr. Dunn. So that was just under three minutes. Excellent. Are there questions? I think we're going to hold questions till everybody's done, if you don't mind, please. So we will go to Mr. Bradham next. And Mr. Bradham lives in downtown Mystic and he has corresponded with us before. So Mr. Bradham, if you'd like to take two to three minutes to give us your view of this, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, obviously, one of the, one of the important lessons I learned in graduate school was where you stand depends upon where you sit. And right now I sit in downtown Mystic in a, on gravel street in the Mystic River Historic District. And one question I had of the mayor and the work group over the summer was that we just don't know in Groton very much about the extent of the short-term rental issue at all. So just to give you an idea of what we may be facing or encountering right now, is I looked at a, just for today, and this is only pertaining to as of today, November 17th. I used a site called AirDNA, which is a market research site for short-term rentals, to kind of get an idea of what the issue was in Groton, Mystic, Noank, Groton, Long Point, West Mystic. And I don't have paid access to the site, so my, my research is limited to what I could garner free going in and, you know, doing things anonymously. But as of today, there's 233 active rentals in Groton, according to AirDNA. Eighty-three percent of them are entire house rentals. The majority of them are marketed, two-thirds of them are marketed on Airbnb, 22% on VRBO, and 12% on other sites, of which there are hundreds of other rental sites now. The Wall Street Journal had an article on this just over the weekend in the Weekend Edition. Of those listings, 233 active rentals, 46 are available full-time. That means half of them are available all the time. So they are not really anyone's primary residence. They are just investment properties, as Larry Dunn mentioned, that are owned by commercial interest, that are buying up properties, certainly in downtown Mystic and our residential neighborhoods, and making them available to transient lodges. I happen to know that because I share a right-of-way with one of them for the last year. And this property was sold to an investment group out of Fairfield County. And this investment group owns three properties in Mystic, all of which it rents 365 days a year. It displaced three families when it bought those properties that were long-term tenants. And it basically is used as transient lodging for people who'd like to come and stay in Mystic. And the property next to me on gravel street, they've entertained in the last year 750 guests. And we know this because we share the right-of-way, so we see everyone who comes up the driveway, more or less. So that's in a year, which is a pandemic year, they've lodged 750 people in this past year. We live in an RS-12 residentially zoned, single-family unit lodging area. It's zoned for single-family use. However, essentially, I've had a hotel operating next door to me for the last year. So my neighbors and I can relate stories about parking problems, trespass problems on our docks and our lawns and other things, because people come here to vacation and they get into a vacation mode. And that's what's, what's happened in a residential area. And I'm, and I'm, I'm concerned that a historic district, like the Mystic River Historic District, which is what draws people to Mystic in the first place, may not exist much longer because property values are, are declining because of the influx of tourists that are using our streets as hotels and other temporary lodging. That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradham. I appreciate your thoughts on that. Mr. Munn is here from Groton Long Point, I believe. Mr. Munn?
Good evening. Hello?
Good evening.
Hi. Yes, Ray Munn from Groton Long Point. That's a disclosure of Groton Long Point. I have a limited view of what short-term rental histories are throughout the town of Groton. But from what I do know, there are problematic short-term rentals. That is, they have a negative impact on the local area. And I know of short-term rentals that do not have such a short-term, short-term rental problem to the community. I also know of, you know, pure residential, owner occupied residential areas that have problems that are impacted on the community. So this seems almost like a, a whitewash of effect from what I've seen. What I would like to say is, what the council is going to be aimed at, whatever they're going to be aimed at, it would be a, it seems to be an ordinance of registration and perhaps control, but which should be aimed at the symptoms, I would say, of what might be objectionable to a short-term rental. That is, the parking, if it's a negative impact on the community, the local community. Noise, of course, that could be handled as today under the statutes, would need an ordinance for that. One idea that's brought up in our working group was owner occupancy. That is a, that would solve some problems. In other words, if the owner is there, that owner is not going to want to put up with problems that the neighbor would be subjected to by the renters. I would suggest that any ordinance that be enacted be such that the owner of the property is cited rather than the, or maybe in addition to the tenant. Otherwise, you know, the tenant's gone and the citation goes blank, out of state tenant, what have you. It, it should be, whatever negative effect should be, that should be corrected, should be corrected by the owner of the property. I, I guess that's, that's it of what I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Munn. Mr. McBride and Mr. Crouch are also here from Groton Long Point. Did either of you gentlemen wish to take a couple minutes to add to what Mr. Munn has said, Mr. Crouch or Mr. McBride?
Hi, this is Cal Crouch. I, I'll take just a minute. We, we have taken a pretty deep dive at Groton Long Point. The board put together an ad hoc committee to take a look at the issue. And we've been studying it for better part of a year plus. Our objective was to try and make sure we come up with a recommendation that would balance the, the sort of special nature of Groton Long Point community with the rights of property owners, many of whom have rented their homes at Groton Long Point for decades. We also wanted to avoid an expensive and protracted legal battle, which we think can be avoided through, by taking a more reasonable approach. One of the key issues for us has been that short, the short-term rental issue has become muddled because people, a fair number of people have lumped together short-term renters with visitors, to homeowner visitors and people who have just walked onto the point. So we've been trying to separate the problems in terms of noise and parking and traffic and beach etiquette and that sort of thing, and make sure that they apply to short-term renters, not just. and make sure that they apply to short-term renters, not just other people who are on, at Groton Long Point. So therein lies our challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McBride, did you wish to add anything for Groton Long Point view? I think Mr. McBride's here.
Hi. This is David McBride. I have not been involved in the intricate details of this committee, but it is a serious matter for Groton Long Point. And I appreciate to hear this information and how the town of Groton is going to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McBride. Let's see. Okay, we have, I believe, some residents from the city. I think Mr. Davis is here. Mr. Davis, did you wish to take a couple of minutes, two, three minutes? And tell us why you want us to take a look at this, please?
Well, would it be possible? I, what is, I appreciate your holding this forum. And so far, it's all been those of us not in support of, let's say, the short-term rentals or proponents of regulation. Would it be possible to give other people that are proponents of the short-term rental concept, maybe give them time and circle back later to me?
I have an order, so I don't miss anybody, so.
Okay.
Could you speak now, please? Thank you.
I'd be glad to. So I won't repeat the issues. My name's John Davis. I live in Groton City, a couple of blocks from the Eastern Point entrance. And you already know what the issues are about parking noise, density, mistakes, trespassing, you know, on and on and on. And I guess my main point is I think, you know, both the town council and the city council can resolve this issue pretty readily by just creating some fair regulation, not too onerous, where where people renting out their homes has gone on for years. But at the same time, since zoning was instituted, let's say, I, I don't really know, in the 70s or 80s, it has not allowed for people to commercially rent their homes. The zoning in the town, the zoning in the city says unless it's specifically allowed, it's not allowed. So right now, my understanding and with legal advice is it's on shaky ground, that there's, it's, there's a precedent. But in fact, it's not allowed in zoning. So assuming the town council, the city council doesn't want to change zoning regulations, let's say in favor of short-term rentals, probably the, the most expeditious thing to do would be to just create some regulations, or I think people are calling them ordinances, which would regulate this in fairness to everybody. And I, I think it's really as simple as that. But I, I do feel the town council, the city council does have a responsibility to address it. Barber shops and homes or beauty parlors and homes are regulated. Physician offices and homes are regulated. So why, you know, renting out rooms or the entire house is not regulated? It's just inherently fair and I think unfair, excuse me, and I think everybody knows that. So we're just asking, let's, let's be more thorough and address it also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I am going to go, I believe, let me just take a quick peek. I'm on multiple screens here. Yes, Mayor Hedrick is with us. Mayor Hedrick was gracious enough to be part of our group as well. And I'd like to go to Mayor Hedrick at this point because just as I was saying with Noank zoning, the city also has separate zoning. So even if the town council chose to take some kind of action, and I'm not saying the council is, is going to do so, but if we did decide to do so, it would not necessarily apply to the city unless the city and Noank chose to go along with that. So I would love to give Mayor Hedrick the opportunity to offer his input at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Town Council. Thank you, Town Manager Burt. This is something that, that we were starting to look at. And then COVID happened, so I was not able to have our session. But I did join onto this working group. And I have a new planner now. We've, our planner transitioned. So I have a new planner. She does have experience with these kinds of things. We will, as the city and city council, evaluate the current situation with short-term rentals. We will evaluate whether or not we need an ordinance. I have met with many of the local mayors and selectmen, first selectmen and first selectwomen here to talk about it. Some people have ordinances, some people don't. Right now, the state does not have a, have an overarching ruling on it or, or anything like that. So that ends up being a challenge. And one of the challenges that, that I think we face is the rights of the property owner versus the rights of the surrounding neighbors. And that's one of the things that's going to be a challenge in looking at. Some of the complaints, for example, noise and parking and things like that, there are already ordinances or laws that are already in place that address those kinds of things. And one of the things that I am concerned about is, okay, we want to hold the, the short-term rentals, renters to a certain standard, but we don't want to hold the homeowners to the same standard. And, you know, how do you, and when you talk about equity and fairness, how can that be? For example, somebody said, we need an ordinance, so they can't play music after 10 o'clock. And I said, okay. So if you want to do that, then that means your neighbor can't play music after 10 o'clock either, because if you're going to be fair, you're going to be fair. Now, one of the challenges we run into, everybody's run into and talked about, is party houses and those kinds of things. But you can work with the short-term rental operators and talk to them about those kinds of things. And, and you get your arms around it that way. But the city will be evaluating this and I will be bringing it to my council as soon as my planner and I get our arms around it and then we'll start going down our road. And, and I honestly don't know where this will, where, where this will land. I'm fairly confident that I'm not going to change the zoning document, because if you change the zoning document, your grandfather, everybody is probably going to, if we go in a route of regulation, it will probably be in the, as an ordinance. So I won't go on any further than that, but thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm done.
Thank you, Mayor Hedrick. And I would ask that you would just keep a surprise of when you're having meetings. That way, if councilors would like to attend, they, they could do so also. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time. So now I have three, three of our guests this evening are property owners. And the first is Andrea Leno. And I think Andrea is here. There's Andrea, yeah? So if you'd like to give us a couple of minutes and tell us your perspective, please. Andrea was kind enough to join us over summer for one of our meetings to share her perspective.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you very much.
Wonderful. Thank you for inviting me. My name is Andrea Lenu, and I've been living in Groton City since 2003, primarily up in Groton Bank, where we own a home that we're, we're trying to sell now, actually. In 2017, we bought a home down in Eastern Point. I have raised three children in, in Groton Bank, love Groton City. And love the beach. My children grew up at that beach. And my husband and I were riding our bike down by Groton, down by the beach three years ago. Saw a house for sale. Long story short, oh, wouldn't it be great? Put an offer. Two months later, we own the house and we put it on Airbnb. This house was a stretch for us. I, I will also, I'll get to the end of the plot. We now live in this home. But between then and now, we put it on Airbnb for two years and 10 months to stretch into a home that we otherwise would not have been able to afford. I have to say, it was, it's a beautiful area. I mean, which is why I live here now. And, you know, unfortunately, or fortunately, we were pretty successful on Airbnb. We made some money that we put into the home. It's not like we made any money on the home. But we were able to, to keep it up. We live here now. I will say that renting on Airbnb, and I'm just sharing my perspective. I am extremely invested in my, in my city, in my neighborhood. I, again, I'm, I'm a homeowner. And renting, I, I also will admit that I love being a guest. I love renting on Airbnb. I have three children, so we're a family of five. When my, you know, at a certain point, we, we no longer fit into a hotel room. So we, I've stayed at over three dozen Airbnbs and I do love the forum. It, it allows people like me to travel with my kids. So I was happy to try hosting, because people who like staying need places to stay. Super positive experience for the most part, except for maybe one or two, you know, people who didn't clean the way I would have liked. From a neighborhood perspective, it has been awful. It's been extremely difficult. And I have to say, I, I hear my neighbors loud and clear. The, the, the point of view that you have heard expressed very nicely here in a, in a very civil way. From my perspective, it has been a series of petitions, phone calls, gossip, meetings in people's homes, public hearings. I'm a very private person. I've had to, you know, actually tell this story multiple times. All, all of that is to say, I, I, I think there's, that Airbnb is a democratizing force. It, it allows people to move around, to see places they wouldn't be able to see otherwise. I, I am also interested in my town, in, in my city being a good place to live for everyone. But that, that's, that's my story.
Thank you very much for sharing that with us. I believe Amy is Amy Kerschner, correct, Ms. Kerschner?
Press Alt-A.
Ms. Kerschner?
I know, I'm here, I'm here.
Hi, how are you? Thank you for coming up.
Sorry, I'm not so good at Zoom, so.
All right, no problem.
Well, thank you for inviting me. I really appreciate it and I appreciated being invited over the summer. This is a very important and somewhat a little bit of emotional topic for me because I grew up in the summers visiting Noank since I was born. My parents bought our house, or built our house on Morgan Point in Noank in 1980, after coming here since 1957. I have a group of people that I have coalesced with who also are in my position where we have what I would call at this point generational homes. Some of my colleagues that rent their homes as well on Airbnb or VRBO and Noank have been here potentially for as long as six generations. So I think we all know that the Groton property tax bills are high. We're not all able to live full-time in our homes because we have to work in larger metropolises to support our homes and to support our life. So Gro, you know, Groton and Noank are in easy commutable distances to Boston, New York. Har, even Hartford is kind of far away. So a lot of us keep our family homes as second homes and live here a lot. Particularly during a pandemic, we're here a lot, remote working and what have you. But what I'd like to say is that most of us, the vast majority of us who rent our homes, also live in our homes. So it's, it's not a hotel. It's our home and we rent it to people with great care, with great care. We vet our tenants. We are very nervous that somebody wouldn't take good care of our homes, so we have large deposits. We have leases that restrict noise, partying, fireworks, et cetera. And I really respect some of the comments made by people who are looking at this balance. I wouldn't want my neighbor to be shooting off fireworks and scaring my dog or shooting off cannons or having large parties. But a lot of our permanent residents here or people who don't rent out their houses have large parties, are very noisy. I think there has to be a balanced approach to this. After many, many months of listening to the Noank Commission talk about regulation, I think just like Mayor Hedrick said, I think there should be a permit required. There should be some sort of ordinance to regularize this, to stop the battle between people who agree with it and don't agree with it. But let's do this rationally and reasonably. We're not the Hamptons. You know, I have been renting my house part-time to pay my property tax bills, which are ever-growing, for three seasons. I've never had a complaint. I have reviews that I'd love to share with the commission. Every single one of them is a five-star review and they laud our beautiful community. They laud how friendly it is. They frequent our restaurants, our little stores. They go to Mystic. It's economically important. They don't add to the traffic because when I take my car away to live in my apartment and let them rent my house, they replace my car. If you really want to look at the noise and traffic problems in Noank and do a real study, it's the abbots of the world, the marinas. And it's a, it's the fact that we're a coastal village and we have a summer community. People own second homes here. They don't all live here permanently. So in the summer, there's a natural surge in population and traffic and noise. But I really respect some of the comments made that if you say a short-term renter, and again, you can do the research. I don't think it would be that hard to find out what the predominant type of renter that comes to Noank or Groton is. They're families. There's very few party houses in Noank. There was one, and then it turned out that it was actually the person's relative that was creating a lot of the problems. Most of us rent to families with children. And, and these are people who appreciate our community and are respectful of our community. So I would, in closing, I would organize a group to come up with a fair and balanced approach to this that treats all citizens of our towns equally. And, and don't tell people who rent their homes respectfully and carefully and bring good people to our town, tell us that we can't do that and potentially have to lose our generational homes because we can't pay the property taxes. So thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. And last, we have Mr. McCormick. Mr. McCormick? If you could just tell us a little bit about your property and your experience, please? Mr. McCormick, are you with us?
Head on mute.
Hi. That's okay. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you for, for having me. So I built a waterfront resort in West Mystic about a year and a half ago. And to date, we've had no issues with respect to these sort of topics we're discussing today. And I think Ray, the mayor, and Amy stole a lot of the thunder that I was going to say, so I won't repeat some of those things. But what I will say is from a revenue standpoint, you know, if you look at these short-term rentals, Connecticut has the highest occupancy tax in the nation at 15%. So a lot of us are paying a lot of tax to the state. I don't know if that funnels back to Groton or not, but I, I think that, you know, when you look at the revenue, the, the state gets, you look at the revenue of all these restaurants downtown and the tourism and all the byproduct of good families coming to town. I think, I think it's a fabric of, of what we, what we have here on the shoreline, and I think it's a good thing. I think if, if we're looking for more money, maybe we, we create a tax, a small tax. I mean, Connecticut seems to tax all of us too much anyways. And we, we come up with a 1% tax or something that tries to generate more additional revenue on, on top of the state tax for maybe enforcement of existing regulations and ordinances that we have, that we should all abide by. I'm not an owner-operator. I live one, you know, one and a half miles from the property. I'm usually there two, three hours every day working on it. But I, I, I think we, we have something special in the shoreline that we should embrace. And again, I won't reiterate what Ray said, because I agree with the mayor. I agree with Amy. She said everything, you know, we, I have great reviews on the property and I, I think we're blessed to live where we are.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Okay, that's all our, our speakers for this evening. So what I'd like to do now, in the interest of trying to figure out if the council wishes to pursue this further at another meeting, I want to give councilors the opportunity to ask any questions while we have all our guests with us this evening. So let me just, I'm trying to get this to a place where I can see everybody's hands. Let me go this way. Okay. So do councilors have any questions that they want to ask that would be kind of clarifying questions to help you decide whether you want to pursue the issue of short-term rentals further? And the goal would be when we're done with this item on the agenda, And the goal would be when we're done with this item on the agenda, we'll know if we're going to go forward and explore this further or if you just want to drop the whole thing. All right? So I see Counselors Zepary has his hand up. Counselors Zepary, you have the floor.
We hear about abuses of the short-term rentals, so over-parking, parking on neighbor's property of party houses. Do we have any idea of what the frequency of these events are in the town? We may have a lot of short-term rentals. We hear, we heard from some people that the guests are always respectful and they enjoy the property and they don't disturb their neighbors. But I think the, the driving force to get us to develop an ordinance would be to have some knowledge of the extent of abuses. If there's one or two abuses per year, I question whether or not we should go forward. But if there are frequent abuses, then we certainly should go forward.
Well, I think all of the guests that were with us this evening, well, I shouldn't say all of them, but we had several guests this evening that outlined several abuses. And we had people in Noank and in Groton Long Point. And then the gentleman from Mystic, they, they are pursuing this because they have received complaints, right? So we, I wanted for you to hear both sides of the story. But I think the fact that Noank and Groton Long Point and the city are all considering this issue is an indication that there have been issues. And that's not to say that the people who were kind enough to join us tonight are the people that are creating these issues. I think if they are so vested in the property that they're with us this evening, you're probably not going to see those issues from, from the guests we have with us here this evening. But I'm not sure if Mr. Burt has any concrete details. I do not have that. It's just more of, based on what is happening throughout the town. And I'm looking to see if Mr. Burt's still here.
I don't, I don't know how we would get that. You know, people might call it a noise complaint for a party, but it wouldn't be, you know, it wouldn't, there wouldn't be a way to know if it was for an STR or not.
Right. Counselor Baumgartner had his hand up. Counselor Baumgartner, did you wish to speak? So I'm trying to find you again. You're on the second page. There you are. Counselor Baumgartner, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And my thanks goes to everyone who came before us this evening. I know, considering there are multiple zoning districts within our municipality, you know, it is so important that we consider the needs and weigh the interests of each neighborhood. Because not, not every neighborhood is the same as the other. They're unique in their own ways and have their own set of challenges. So, you know, it's so obvious that we must, you know, remain cognizant of that. But my question is to, no one in particular, maybe, you know, anyone can answer. What they see as the difference between, you know, a homeowner who, as I think Andrea described, is, you know, renting out their own home. It's not as if they're renting, you know, owning a series of properties throughout the municipality and renting them out or, you know, owns a company that, you know, would rent the multiple properties out. It's just simply her own property. So, you know, would the speakers or folks who are part of this working group, have there been any considerations to creating a set of regulations or new, a new, new zoning regulations or a code of ordinances that would kind of reflect that, that nuance or that difference?
Give me one second. I'm seeing a hand, but I'm trying to find out. I have two attendees with their hands up, but I'm not, I can't see who they are. Mr. Burt, can you see which attendees?
It's Larry Dunn and John Davis and Tom Bradham.
Okay, so let's start with Larry, please. Thank you, Counselor Heed.
Thank you. And the short answer is yes. And I think there is a difference and you've heard it, you know, from some of the folks today. There's certainly a recognition of difference between a homeowner, you know, supporting staying in a home or what being called a, you know, a hereditary home and having it run as a commercial property. When you run some of the numbers on the back of an envelope, you really have to go more than 100 days to start making a profit. So when you have a, a property that is then run as a mini hotel or motel, whatever you want to call it, you really have to do it. That creates an income and a profit. And that's why you're seeing investors come in that are corporations and not homeowners. So there is a difference. I know there's a consensus, certainly, you know, within the Noank community to recognize that difference. And, you know, part of the two-year effort that, that we've been on is to try and codify how to put that in a structure that's fair to everybody. But, you know, I think that's, the short answer was yes.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Mr. Bradham?
Thank you. I would, Madam Mayor, I second what Mr. Dunn said. And to answer Mr. Zepary and Mr. Burt, that the problem is we don't know enough about the short-term rental situation. And the beginning of any ordinance would be the licensing and permitting of short-term rental registrations and opportunities to operate a short-term rental. I don't think the work group in any fashion whatsoever is aiming to ban or prohibit short-term rentals. But we have to get a handle on those that are primary residences or owner-occupied or generation homes, et cetera, and that are traditional beach rentals, summer year, academic year, things like that. But a short-term rental by definition with the state of Connecticut does define it as anything less than 30 days. And that's upon the 15% occupancy tax Mr. McDermott was talking about. And there's a problem also between the different zoning areas that the counselor pointed out. RS zones in town and like Harborview Landing, as, as was mentioned, on Casino Road in Willow Point, that's in a, in a working waterfront district. So it's already a commercial district. So a proposed ordinance that would go before the town council, I think, has to encompass trying to maintain short-term rentals and allowing homeowners to use their property as such, keeping out corporate interests that just want to run between regulations and not operate a bed and breakfast or a hotel or some lodging facility and comply with regulations. Right now, you have these disruptive internet platforms like Airbnb, VRBO, allowing corporate interests to hide in an area of no regulation. They're not regulated by anybody. They're not regulated by the Ledge Light Health District. So there's no sanitary requirements. They're not subject to the fire codes. They, they violate the zoning laws that exist in the town. So I think an ordinance that, you know, certainly is, is more beneficial than trying to claim any rewriting of zoning regulations is imperative that we go that way. The, the zoning regs in the different districts in town, none of them have any reference at all to short-term rentals. When the Groton town rewrote their zoning regs, the consultant in 2017 did recommend that short-term rentals be, be defined. And the zoning commission at that time decided not to. So now you don't have any definition of short-term rentals in the zoning regulations. An ordinance would provide a comprehensive overview that the city could latch on to perhaps. Noank obviously would be covered. Groton Long Point could opt to cover it if they wanted to also. So I think as people in Noank mentioned, it, it takes a, a, some sort of going forward, some committee, maybe of town council, town staff, residents. I know Denver has a short-term rental advisory committee that works with town officials to move this, the agenda forward and meets regularly to have all parties represented on this committee. That's what I would hope the town of Groton would do, to be inclusive and come up with something that does work for the town, but keeps out people who are looking to, to frankly, make a quick dollar on violating zoning regs and housing ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradham. And I believe Mr. Bradham, as part of the working group, provided some documentation from Denver. I think, I think you gave that to us over the summer and that was included in the packet that you all received. So I think it had some definitions and there was much material there. So if you're interested in pursuing this, you can take a look at that and make reference to Denver, as Mr. Bradham had stated. And I believe Mr. Davis also wanted to speak in response to Counselor Baumgartner. Mr. Davis?
Thank you. To answer your question, Counselor, several of us have already drafted our version of, let's say, ordinance outline or the outline of an ordinance to address these issues, to try to make it fair, but at the same time considerate of the rights of the homeowner versus the rights of the neighbors. So we can get you copies of that. But the outline has already been done by this working group. Thank you.
So they, the council has everything that was submitted to the working group over summer. So if you're referring to the items that Mr. Dunn provided, the council has those. But if you have additional information, please definitely share it with us as counselors may be interested in, in moving forward. So let's, I see another hand. Counselor Heed, help me out here if you don't mind, please. For some reason, I am not seeing hands.
Mr. Davis is, Mr. Davis has his hand up.
Oh, okay. Did you wish to speak again, Mr. Davis?
No, thank you.
That's good. Okay. All right. So do any other counselors want?
Ray Munn now has his hand up.
I'm not sure why I'm not seeing them. I'm only seeing him in the little Brady Bunch boxes. I'm not seeing him in the lists like I normally do. So you said Mr. Munn. Mr. Munn, please. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Munn is muted if you're able to unmute him.
He's unmuted.
I'm trying to. Yeah, yeah. Okay. I'll hold off. You're, you're interviewing, interviewing the counselors. I didn't mean to interrupt. Please go ahead.
No, go ahead. Nobody else had their hand up. So you have the floor, sir.
I, I just was, wanted to mention that I don't think that the, any draft ordinance was a product of the working group. It was offered to the working group and I think you forwarded it to the council, but it's, the, the working group did not, I don't think, have any product.
That is absolutely correct. Thank you very much for clarifying that, Mr. Munn. There was nothing that came out of the group. It was individual work that was presented to the whole council for the council's review. And, and just to clarify, if anything is to be done at this point, it's the council's prerogative to decide how they wish to proceed. So we could proceed as a council or the council could choose to do something else with it. So right now, I'm looking to see if other counselors have questions that they would like to ask or if you need anything clarified before I ask you what you want to do with this. Counselor Heed?
I should probably disclose that I have 25 years' experience in the hospitality business until recently. I'm no longer working there, but I do hope to go back. But that being said, I'm not at all opposed to Airbnb as, as a business model. I think there are some things that should probably be handled, but we'll discuss that shortly.
Okay. Any other counselors wish to speak or ask questions at this point? Counselor Bordelain, you have the floor?
Yes, I just, I was, just wanted to also, for the record, say that I was part of that working group that attended. So I'm not sure if there's other people that have, that also were a part that were not recognized yet. But I think it's important to recognize everybody that did attend and listened and took part in the meeting. But I have no further questions. Thank you.
Are there any counselors who wish to ask questions or offer opinions as to how you would like to proceed with this? Counselor Aubrey?
Well, I for one think we should go forward with it. I think it might be a good idea to put together a committee to look into it and then come to the council with recommendations. That's just a suggestion. However, we end up doing it is, is fine. But I think we should, it's our responsibility to pursue it.
Thank you, Counselor Aubrey. I concur. I think the, I think the council should continue to look for, look into this further and make some decisions as to what we want to do. And you're hearing tonight from many people here that there would be no objection to some kind of registry and some kind of regulation, whether it be, you know, enforcing the existing regulations or having just a registry so we know where people are. I, I don't think that would be objectionable to most people that have spoken this evening. But I do think, we do have to weigh, I, I concur with Mayor Hedrick, the way the interests of the property owners against the interests of the neighborhood. And that's a, that's a balance that you have to do, very fine line. So I, I would like for the council to continue to look into this. And if it's the will of the council to have a committee, that would be fine. I think that we would need to have input from town staff. And I'm not sure how taxed the planning and development office is at this point. So I'm going to take more counselors' questions and then I will ask Mr. Burt to chime in with his thoughts on how we could proceed if it's a consensus of the council to do so. Counselor Baumgartner, I'm just going to see if there's anybody else who wants to speak first and then we'll come back to you. And I'm not seeing any other counselors with their hands up. So Counselor Baumgartner, you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to clarify, the group that came before us, are they organized in any formal way currently? Or is it simply just an array of, of, you know, concerned citizens with different viewpoints?
Right. We met, I think we met three times and that was about it. We met once to kind of get an overview. And then once we had other guests in, we had both sides of the issue coming to speak. And then the last time was just to kind of wrap everything up. But we are, the working group is disbanded at this point. So the council would have to decide what you would like to do and if you would like to have a group of counselors that would work or if you would like to form something else. That's all up in the air at this point. But the working group is done and you have the fruits of the labor. You have all the material that we've collected and it's a hefty bit of reading for you. And hopefully you've had a chance to take a look at it. Did you have other questions, Counselor Baumgartner?
No, other than, you know, if this group would be interested in continuing the dialogue, I'd be very comfortable with, you know, having them help shape discussions if we're looking to move into the direction of creating an ordinance to create a set of regulations. I, I'd be very comfortable considering everyone has varying viewpoints. And if we can come to, I think, some kind of compromise or, you know, an agreement, I'd be, I'd be comfortable supporting that.
So it looks like we have three that would like to pursue looking into this. Again, I see Counselor Heed, but I'm looking for other first-time counselors if they wish to speak first. I see none. Counselor Heed, you have?
All right. I'll just chime in that I also would like to see a working group of, you know, just as Counselor Baumgartner and Aubrey had mentioned, something cooperative. And personally, I would like to see something that focuses on safety to the guests who are staying in these properties. I think that's got to be kind of a tantamount issue, but definitely I, I support moving forward.
Thank you, Counselor Heed. So we have, let's see. That's four counselors who wish to move ahead. So are there other counselors that wish to speak, either in favor of moving ahead and exploring this further or opposed to it? We don't have a consensus to do either right now. Well, we, unless, we have a consensus to do nothing unless we hear from other counselors who wish to move ahead. So I'm, I'm going to ask people if you would just voice your opinion, please. Counselors Zepary, what's your sense on moving forward or would you like to drop this?
I'd like to move forward cautiously.
Okay, so there's five. Counselor Bordelain, what is your preference? You're muted, Counselor Bordelon?
I guess I have a question. If I'm being asked to speak. So out of the folks that spoke tonight, how many actually fall into the jurisdiction of what a town council could enact?
So that would be?
My number's correct. It looks like two, possibly?
That would be... Yes, I believe two.
Okay. Right. And, I mean, with no disrespect, I know that, like, you know, Mayor Hendrick said that it's a city part, and he has to look into his angle. And Groton Long Point has their part, and No Ink has theirs. And so, looking at the group that can form, and what, even if we did form with collaboration with them, in the end, what the town council comes forward with, would be, only fall under that jurisdiction. So I'd be interested in moving forward. I do think we need some more people that are stakeholders in the Airbnbs, that fall in the jurisdiction of the Town of Groton, to really form a collaborative, you know, opinion. As with no disrespect, I think, too, is wonderful. And the, I think it'd be great to have collaboration with the city, as well as No Ink and Groton Long Point. So I do think that that would need to be done. And I think, you know, I, I would be in favor of it if we're going to stretch to make sure we pull in more stakeholders that fall under the Town of Groton jurisdiction, since this is the Town of Groton, you know, council. And it's all of one Groton, but as it was said, you know, there are certain things that we can't change in certain areas unless they want to be a part of it, you know, which, you know, I think it'd be great to have the collaboration. So I think, I guess, if the direction of the research group would be to pull in some more people from that location, and keeping some of the members that are already, are already currently on. But I think that would be important. I know that, like, we pass a plastic ordinance, and it only covered a certain section. So that's, you know, if the other outliers are completely, you know, not in agreement, say Groton Long Point, or the city, which they said they would collaborate, it sounds. But if they come to the conclusion that they're not going to move forward, then we can then narrow in, is this something that we're going to do for the town, or, you know, do we, we stop there? You know, so I guess there's a lot of pieces to kind of moving parts to it, I guess, is what I'm trying to say, to see which angle this would really go. Because we currently have a plastics ordinance that only covers the town and none of the outlining areas, which are geographically along the water. So it's a great ordinance, and it's a great in the right direction. And I just think that this one should have, you know, much more collaboration and full involvement. So I'm, so I'm kind of, I'm in support if we can make sure that we're looking at everyone. I don't know how hard I want to go with it. I think having definitely the safety concerns, and looking to make sure that, as some have stated tonight, that they're at least on our radar. So like, when the COVID spikes happened, that, you know, people that are kind of coming into the town, you know, might have a way of, you know, knowing what's going on. And, and that way, if Airbnbs are registered, I think it's important for the fire department, medical personnel to know that, you know, these buildings could be unoccupied, or there could be a different number of people, you know, that are inside in the event of an emergency. So from the safety standpoint, I think it would be to have some type of, at minimum, some type of register, maybe a small fee to keep that going. But I'm sure there's more that can come out from this. But I'd be in support of looking at this as a whole. Thank you.
And I just, I know there are attendees with their hands up, but I just wanted to give Counselor Melendez and Franko a chance to offer their opinion at this point, if either of you wish to express how you wanted to go, if you wanted to pursue or drop this.
If I could, I, I don't have any objection to a, to a committee going forward and looking deeper into this. I've been reading a lot of the material that we were presented, and I don't have any, like, concrete, you know, opinion on this yet. But as, as like a general philosophy, I would, I would err on the side of homeowners' rights. But again, there's nothing concrete. I've been reading through this. I'm open to hearing all sides of the story, and just, that's why I think we should move forward and learn more about it.
Thank you, Counselor Melendez. And Counselor Franco, did you wish to chime in on this issue?
Thank you, the advisement of the mayor at our last meeting. I will bow to the will of the majority of the council.
And I believe Mr. Bradham has his hand up. And then, Mr. Burt wished to speak.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I just had a, wanted to clarify. I realize Groton, No Ink has its own zoning authority, but if the town passed an ordinance, wouldn't that be applicable to No Ink also?
So, Mr. Burt, this would be a great time for you to jump in. You can, you can lead with that question, and then follow up with the availability of planning staff to help us.
A zoning, they have their own zoning ordinance, so zoning would not apply. But I, I want to double check with our attorneys, but I think an actual ordinance would like, they have the ability to do an ordinance because of the fire district. But I believe, barring that, that our, our ordinance would apply unless we exempted them out. But again, I would, I would want to double check with attorneys, but that's my understanding.
Yeah, that's my understanding also. So it's, it's a larger group than just two. It involves all the No Ink participants on the work group also. And the people, the residents who came forward tonight, they're involved, too. I think the city and Groton Long Point has the, have their own ordinance ability. But I think No Ink falls under the Town of Groton. So I just wanted clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradham. Mr. Burt, do you have any sense of how the council could be working with staff at this time? What kind of availability would your staff have at this point?
I'd already talked with planning staff. John Reiner, the director, could participate in one meeting a month, but he's not, he would not be able to be lead staff or be doing a lot of work for it. He would just be there simply to answer zoning questions. And the bigger thing to keep in mind is, in terms of enforcing any kind of ordinance, the current staffing level would not permit it. We'd have to look at contracting out, or for anything new, or for adding positions. As it is, the recycling has become pretty burdensome on, the plastics ordinance has become fairly burdensome on our zoning enforcement officer.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. And then, just one other, one other question. Well, we can, we can hold that for now. Counselor Bordelon has her hand up. Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying. And I wait to hear the opinion on how it affects, if it does not, does or does not affect No Ink. So that does increase the number that was represented. So that's great. I just wanted to, you know, get more information on how that would look and work, just to see what it looks like for the big picture. But I appreciate the clarifying response for that. Thank you.
Okay. So it looks like we have consensus to move ahead. Now, the question is, in what form do we want that to take? So what I would suggest we do as a council is to put this on another agenda. And at that meeting, then decide what we want to do, and what your preference is as far as how we want to tackle this issue. So now that we know that we do want to pursue this, we will keep, I have, I certainly have everyone's contact information who was gracious enough to join us over summer and tonight at this meeting. And we will be in touch with them once the council decides what form this will take, whether it be a product of the committee of the whole, or whether you prefer to form a subcommittee. So with that, I'm trying to look, let's see, we have, I would guess that this would probably go into January at the earliest, Mr. Burt, is that correct? I'm looking at the agenda that we have laid out for the next month. And we're, we have things booked already through January 12th.
Right. That's correct.
At the end of January for the next, when we would take this up again?
Yes. If that's agreeable. I think, I think it'd be hard to fit in before that.
I agree. I agree. So if that's acceptable to the council, we'll look for, we'll look for this to appear on the agenda again at the end of January. And at that point, I would ask for some decisions from you as to how you wish to proceed, whether you want it to be a council, just council committee, or if you want to form a different kind of committee to pursue this further. So we'll say last cow in January. Okay, great. All right. Well, thank you, all the, all the people who have been so gracious with their time. We thank you very much for coming out and giving us all this energy. And if, if you do not wish to participate any further when we reach out to you, please feel free to just turn us down. But we would love to have you back, and we love and value your input very much. So thank you all. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, town council. Thank you, town manager.
Good night, all.
Good night, Mr. Munn. Let me just shuffle my papers around here. Okay, we are on 2027-88 Colonel Ledgerd School property. We need to set a public hearing. This was on page 105 in your packet. And I believe we are on Counselor Baumgartner.
Yes, in a second. Just scrolling through.
Certainly. This was page 105.
Almost there.
Certainly. And Mr. Burt, we have, oh, Mr. Bronk is here. Thank you, Mr. Bronk. I was just going to ask who was here for planning for us.
Good evening, Paige Bronk, economic.
We don't have a motion on the floor yet, Mr. Bronk. If you could just give us one second, please. Thank you.
Yes, I'll make a, recommend a resolution to schedule a public hearing for February 2, 2021, for the sale of the 120 West Street, former Colonel Ledgerd School, and recommend the sale of the 120 West Street, former Colonel Ledgerd School property to the RTM for consideration. So moved.
Second, Heed.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Heed. Mr. Bronk, you have the floor?
Thank you, Paige Bronk, economic and community development manager. It's a fairly simple request. The, the council in the past has recently addressed Sealy, Groton Heights, and also 529 Gold Star Highway in a similar manner. State law requires the town to actually conduct a public hearing in disposing of properties in excess of $10,000 in value. In addition, the town council is required to refer the sale of all property valued over the $10,000 to the RTM. In addition, the Planning and Zoning Commission would need to weigh in on, on that particular request. That actually has already occurred. The Planning and Zoning Commission completed their review February in 2020. So at this point in time, we are requesting that this item be moved forward, as stated in scheduling the public hearing on February 2, 2021. Also, I want to make it clear that this request is separate and apart from any of the, the legal actions that we take in advancing the redevelopment of the property. They are two separate tracks. This is more of a procedural matter for the disposition, but it's not the same process that we use in dealing with option agreements, purchase and sale, and any, any other agreements that go with a particular preferred developer.
Okay. Thank you very much. Does the council have questions for Mr. Bronk on the setting of the public hearing?
No.
Counselor O'Bree does not. Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Bronk? We are at eight counselors this evening. So seeing none, we will vote in favor of 2027-88 Colonel Ledgerd School property set public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's moved unanimously with eight counselors. Thank you. We are on to 5D, 2027-86 Economic Assistance Fund Award, 3 Water Street, the standard. This is on page 106 in your packet. And I believe we are on Counselor Franco for this one.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve a funding request. Wait, am I on the right one?
We are on the one for 2027-86 on page 106.
107. Sorry, excuse me. Make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve a grant award of $116,215 to Eric Goodman for water and sewer line extensions, public sidewalk improvements, and stormwater improvement costs to be paid on a reimbursement basis contingent on the posting of a sign indicating the project was supported by the town-run Economic Assistance Fund, and after satisfying construction specifications and providing proof of payment of related cost. I assume.
Second, Heed.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Heed. Mr. Bronk, are you here to provide background on this also, sir?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
We usually have, on average, a couple of these requests that come before the council annually. And it is quite a process. At this point in time, we are requesting that the, the council support a grant request to Eric Goodman for 3 Water Street, otherwise known as the standard, in the amount of $116,215 for water and sewer line extensions, public sidewalk improvements, and stormwater improvements, occurring as a part of the overall mixed-use development at 3 Water Street. I think everyone is pretty familiar with that particular project in downtown Mystic. I'd like to address how we actually go through the review of a particular application, and then also speak to this particular project, and the investments and the benefits that are coming to the Town of Groton. The town maintains an economic assistance fund, which is not reliant on annual operating funds. It is a CIP project, and the purpose of it is to become a partner with private development in making certain infrastructure improvements on redeveloped or developed properties. And there is typically more of an emphasis on public infrastructure versus exclusively private. Historically, most of these infrastructure investment-type partnerships have been with small and medium-sized projects. Eric Goodman made an application to the town for this grant. In the amount, the total amount that he initially requested was, as stated in the referral, $207,262. It is a four-story mixed-use development. There's an open design parking area at the ground level, mainly as a result of floodplain regulations. There will be 14 residential units and about 6,400 square feet of commercial space. That includes retail and office. Although, it does take us a while to get a particular request to the council, we are often in long discussions with an applicant. In this particular case, our initial conversations with the applicant date back to April 2019. The entire project construction cost is roughly $8.2 million, and the estimated project completion will be May 2021. The current assessed value that would be pre-improved, as you, as you could read in the report, is, is roughly $6,900,000. The post-improvement assessed value is estimated to be about $8.1 million, multiple times the current assessed property value. Based on the post-improved assessed value, we're estimating that the annual taxes will be $224,505. The current property tax is paid on the unimproved The current property tax is paid on the unimproved land. It was only $15,290 a year. We often will review these applications based on what we project to be a future post-improved tax value. The guidelines, which the council had approved years ago, allow us to go up to two years' worth of post-improved tax value as, as a grant award. We have never done that, but that is the maximum cap. The maximum cap on this particular project, if using that equation, was almost $450,000. But certainly, we are not recommending that amount. The application was divided into several infrastructure improvement components. I'm just gonna summarize them. But the first one, water and sewer line extensions. The second, gas, electric, and communication line extensions. The third, public sidewalks. And the public sidewalks are not just on Water Street. They actually run perpendicular to the site and, and go to the rear and connect to the Mystic Art Museum parking lot. A fourth, infrastructure improvement, road improvements. The fifth, street lighting and other streetscape improvements. The sixth, stormwater improvements. And the seventh, utility upgrades. So we often encourage applicants to make a submittal and, and basically illustrate that they are making significant improvements and investments to the property. And from that, we find out what might be the best components that we could potentially assist with in funding. And what are we also considered to be the, the more public improvements? The theory is, we're not looking to just provide money to a business. We're looking to upgrade property to maintain the quality of that real estate over time. In the event this property should ever turn over and be adaptively used in future years, we want to make sure that the infrastructure meets a high standard. So, the Economic Development Commission has a subcommittee that will meet with staff and review these applications. That occurred on October 21st, and we were able to really hone in on, on targeting what areas we think are more exclusive public infrastructure components of the project. They ultimately made the recommendation that is then recommended in your hearing tonight. Prior to advancing to the Town Council, the subcommittee's recommendation were forward, was forwarded to the full EDC. And the full EDC concurred with the recommendation of the subcommittee in focusing on the three components being water and sewer line extensions for $35,650, public sidewalks for $37,440, and stormwater improvements for $43,123, uh, $25. The total, of course, leads to the $116,215. Although it's a fairly high ask, we also had noted the multimillion-dollar investment and also the significant increase in annual taxes that will be coming to the Town of Groton once this project is completed. And that's how we ultimately ended up with the recommendation that we have before you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bronk. Do counselors have questions for Mr. Bronk or wish to express, express an opinion on this item? Counselors, a pair.
Money is to come out of the Economic, Economic Improvement Fund, Economic Assistance Fund. How much money do we currently have in the Economic Assistance Fund?
There is approximately $500,000.
And where did that money come from?
Over a period of years, that fund was built through capital improvement program allocations that were approved by both the council and the RTM.
Capital Improvement Fund allocations. So that the council and the RTM would then replace that money in the Economic Assistance Fund at a next budget? Am I, am I correct?
It has been.
Sorry?
It, it's been a number of years since we've had replacement, although it's been discussed. We, we have not actually had a replacement. That is certainly something the staff encourages. We don't, we don't want to get too low in that fund.
I was just gonna add that it's, it's an item that is, is in our budget every year, but it's not always funded. I'm certain it's not funded to, to the satisfaction of the economic development staff, but sometimes it's a choice that council and RTM makes when they feel that there are other priorities in a, in a tight budget year. But yes, that, we would have that opportunity if it was an item in the budget to, to look at replenishing if we so chose.
And may I ask a couple more questions?
Yes, please.
The, the reimbursement of, we're not, we're to reimburse the Goodman for his expenses in these directions after he's completed the, the task? Is that right?
Yes, that is correct. We, we require that they provide documentation of payment for the items that the council would approve. And also that the work is done, of course, to meet any standards that the town has. And then that's more than simply building code standards, infrastructure, public works-related, public safety standards. Once we have verification that all of that has been done and they provide that documentation, the staff will review it, complete a package, and submit it through finance for a reimbursement.
We require them that they complete the whole project.
We typically, to be clear, I, I don't believe we've ever explicitly said that that has to be the case. However, by the time they get their documentation together and submit it to the town, generally, the project is completed. And often, we'll use the certificate of occupancy as somewhat of a threshold at the end of the project to verify that everything's been done satisfactory. So indirectly, the project is pretty much complete. We've yet to have someone come and request reimbursement on any component prior to the project being done.
Is there any assurance that they won't be asking, or any assurance that you'll see a CO before, before you disperse this money?
No. The certificate of occupancy integrates a, a number of reviews and code compliance. It would include building, electrical, mechanical, fire code, and also public works, transportation-related items. So typically, the CO is not issued until everything is complete and in compliance.
So we're not sure there'll be a CO before we pay, pay this money?
I am, I am fairly certain that there will be a CO before there's a request for the funding, and certainly before we would reimburse any allocation.
Thank you.
Counselor Baumgartner.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Paige, for your presentation tonight. Last week, I was walking in downtown Mystic and walked past the project, and I think it's gonna be really great, the, the finished product. So thanks for your work on, you know, bringing a mixed-use building to Groton. I think that's the wave of the future. But nonetheless, I just have a question, you know, question about the set of criteria the project needed to meet in order to attain these funds. You know, you alluded to some metrics, but if you could just briefly go through those again?
In general?
Yeah, just, you know, in terms of, you know, I, I wasn't sure, for example, if it was in the case of, you know, the three, what is it, a 3 Water Street? If there's a mixed-use building, X amount of, you know, the, they have to develop X amount of units in order to attain X amount of dollars. You know, we just wasn't sure what some of the guidelines you set up for those, you know, interested businesses to set up shop here.
Sure. We, we do have a guidelines document that we provide to the public. It's on our website and the applicants as well. And although the council can't see it that well, it's roughly four pages long, and it provides a program overview, the guidelines. It touches on eligible costs, also the locations within Groton that we are trying to promote commercial redevelopment growth. Under eligible costs and public infrastructure, a little bit of history, when the program started a long time ago, it, it pretty much focused on traditional water, sewer, electric. It's been expanded a little bit to include things like street lighting, stormwater. Now we'll actually entertain a lateral line. It used to just be the main and the roadway. And we do have some criteria for award. They, they basically have to be a small to medium-sized business. They have to demonstrate that they are creating jobs. So it's not for a business, per se, who might want this benefit. It has to be for a development, an existing business or property that is expanding, or, or a new one that has maybe come to town that's bringing some investment. And as I said before, one of the most significant criteria, they have to demonstrate that their post-improved tax value and annual payment to the town is going to be significantly greater than what we pay today. And that really is probably the single largest metric. And then, lastly, we do try to focus on the public infrastructure. So we're not gonna be dealing with some interior component to a building. We're gonna deal with things in the exterior that the public has direct benefit from, such as sidewalks, curb cuts, stormwater, where we're concerned about water quality. Those types of elements, we, we typically target. And then, I guess the last point I would make, in terms of reimbursement with metrics, we, we do require them to provide us the documentation that the project has been completed satisfactory and payment has been made to the contractor. And that allows us the, the information in order to get them the reimbursement after they have made the investment with their own money.
But that pay, the payment would be reimbursed to municipality? The, the actual work would not be deducted by, by, like, public works?
I'm sorry, could you please repeat that?
Yeah, I was saying, I was saying, you know, the work wouldn't be performed by public works or the municipality directly, it would be performed by the private contractor?
That is correct. A private contractor completes the work, and there's private investment that frontloads the expense to get that work done.
And, and lastly, you know, as more of these projects come online in town, you know, I, I think especially, you know, since the pandemic, we've attracted a lot of interest from, you know, folks who have maybe been in New York or elsewhere that want a change of scenery and, you know, want strong schools and, you know, a little bit of everything, you know, in terms of weather as well. And, you know, have seen Mystic and other parts of Groton as, as a community where they want to raise their family. So it's safe to assume that these kind, more of these projects will come online. Is it also safe to assume that, you know, projects that have a great chance of success will also come before the town seeking, you know, funds from this Economic Development Fund? In the case, you know, they're, they need, would like funds for reimbursement for infrastructure?
We believe so. We actually have, when, when people ask us for incentives, sometimes they're not sure what they're asking for. The first thing they'll ask is, can you give me a tax incentive? And we actually have a pre-application for incentives. Well, we ask people to explain, who are you? What business or development do you have? But what, what are you looking for? Because it's possible they're asking for X, and maybe we can offer them Y. Maybe they think that their incentive is at the local level. It could be state, it could be federal. So we try to get information first in the front end and then match them with an available program. We do find that many of the people that come to the town and say, are you gonna give me a tax incentive? We will brief them on this particular program, and many of them are really surprised. It, it's not something that is done in most communities in Connecticut. And I think a lot of investors really like the idea of partnering with a municipality to reduce their risk a little bit on some infrastructure on site. They, they seem to prefer that. And I actually think it goes a long way. And I, I have to say, this particular project that we're dealing with, this was the same development team that expanded SIFT. And they had learned about the program through our award to SIFT Bakery. So I think word travels, and people are learning that the town is, is interested in promoting growth at the right place, the right locations. And I think this fund goes a long way, and we'll probably have many more requests in the future.
Well, I agree. You've demonstrated a balanced approach and, you know, look forward again to seeing more of these projects in the future. Thanks again, Paige.
Thank you.
Okay, I see no other hands, so we will vote on 2027-86 Economic Assistance Fund Award, 3 Water Street, the standard. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. I'm not sure if Mr. Bronk is staying with us for the next item. This is 2027-82 Cultural Coalition Funding Request, and this is on page 108 in your packet. And I believe we are on Counselor Heed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve a funding request from the Southeastern Cultural Coalition in the amount of $750. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second, Melendez.
Moved by heed and seconded by Melendez. Mr. Burt, are you presenting this item?
Yeah, and I think the council's discussed this, or heard of this prior. There's a letter from the Cultural Coalition in the packet. We don't traditionally give money to this group. However, we know a lot of nonprofits are hurting this year, having trouble raising dollars. And so they're, they're reaching out and requesting the 750. And I am in support of it. And it would, it would come out of the, that would come out of the contingency funds.
Okay, Counselor O'Bree has lost her connection. So we are at seven counselors until she comes back in. It is at 8:45 is when the connection went out. So I will wait, and we'll see if she can get back in before the vote. But Counselor Bordelon has her hand up. Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. Is there anything saying we can't give more than the 750? I mean, it looks like after reading the letter, other towns, they're asking. And I think, you know, that we've done quite well in considering, consideration and compared to other towns. Everyone's taking a hit right now. I'm just wondering if we're hard fast to 750.
That's entirely up to the council. That's just the request.
Right. What do you, do we, based on what I read, there, I didn't see a goal number. Do you have any more information regarding that?
I do not, sorry.
I don't know. I, I kind of feel, you know, some, we, we, we did quite well in some areas. Some funds were returned, if I'm not mistaken. Tom, you know, your Bert, we, that we didn't use, right, isn't there? And
Yeah, we've been doing pretty well the last few years.
Yeah, and I just feel like other towns didn't share as, as so great as we did, and that's a compliment to our town, but I think But I think at times, maybe we can give a little bit more. I mean, we're looking at $750 in the big picture. It's, I think for a great, you know, arts and culture, arts is definitely a strong thing. And looking with COVID and needing the need for more outdoor activities coming up in the next couple of years, you know, outdoor concerts and things like that. I would, I would consider, you know, giving this culture $1,000 even, I think would be a fair number to come in at based on our town, our municipality. And when you compare it to some of our surrounding towns, I think maybe it would take the pressure off another town that maybe can only give five. I mean, it says the 700 voluntary. And other towns might not be able to give anything. So I think it's important to support the arts and culture. And if we, if we can do it and it's not going to break the bank by a few hundred dollars, I say we should consider that. So I'm looking at the, just making sure I have my other. I don't see anything. I think increasing it by what, $250 is really. Yeah, I would like to consider another motion on the floor, if possible.
Are you making a motion, Counselor Bordelon?
I was asking if it's the appropriate time to do such.
If you wish to do so.
No, I would just like to make a motion and change that number. Basically, as written, to also say, I recommend a resolution to approve funding for the Southeastern Culture Coalition in the amount of $1,000. I so move.
Is there a second?
A second, Bumgardner.
Counselor Bordelon, you made the motion. You have the opportunity if you wish to speak further on it.
I think we ran a pretty tight budget this year. I think, great, what we did as a council, moving quickly because of COVID. There are some areas where we underfunded things. And this is an agency that doesn't typically ask. And they are coming forward and they do provide great opportunities and events for our community. And I think by increasing this by $250, not a whole ton of money, but it might offset another town that might only give 500. And I think it's something that we as a town can do and we could support that. And we have the means to do such. And I think it would be a strong consideration to do, to, you know, kind of give back since we've done so. So, so great, thank you.
Counselors of Perry and then Heed.
I, they're asking for $750, which is a very small amount of money. But we're not sure what they're going to use it for. I'm just curious, they've given us a letter and on page 109 of our, our handout, there are 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 bullet points of what they do for municipalities, including the town of Groton. I'd just like to ask the town manager, which of these they've actually done for the town of Groton in the past year?
Well, for instance, the first one is the giving updates. Ms. Berry, the director, comes to every cog meeting and goes into what all they're working on, make sure the word gets out. So right there off the bat, I know they're spending a lot of time out in the community to get the word out, putting on a lot of programs. If you go to their website, you can actually see some of the programs they put on. But they're always really willing to get involved in anything. Like when we've talked about doing a grant possibly for arts or other things, they're always very willing to get involved in things.
I would add in that they were instrumental in helping with Make Music Day last year. And I also, I would defer to Counselor Obree and Franco, but I believe Wendy Berry prepared some materials for the beautification committee early on. So they've been active in working with them as well.
How have they helped us to expand tax base, increase foot traffic and promote arts and cultural assets in the town?
I think having the arts increases your tax base by having more people move here. I think that's one of our components of economic development. And like I said, they are active in the community, putting these programs on.
And have they worked with any of our local, regional and economic development agencies?
I can't answer that off the top of my head. I wouldn't be surprised.
Yes, Mr. Bronck was nodding, yes, go ahead, Mr. Bronck.
I know that they are highly active regionally with sector and attending many of the meetings. Sector is required to do a SEDS analysis. And that's a community wide economic development strategy for the federal government. And Wendy was, was a committee member and quite active. I will also say locally, she is involved both in economic and community development. We have a new hire in, in our department, Tabitha Harkin. And immediately Wendy has reached out to Tabitha. They've been having conversations about partnerships.
I would just add, we are down to seven counselors again as of, I think, 8:53. We lost Counselor Obree, so hopefully your connection will come back up. But I will monitor that before the next vote. We have counselors, Counselor Heed has his hand up, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can support the $750. That's what they asked for and it's an unusual year for everybody. And, you know, we have done well. But that's again, what they asked for. And as much as I can agree with the, with the motion that's presently on the floor in terms of being a little bit more generous, I think we need to remember we're spending other people's money and we should be careful not to spend too much, even though we're just talking about 250. So I'll be supporting the, the original request. Thank you.
And Counselor Bumgardner.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. My support for the amended motion is rooted in the recognition that, you know, many of you have stated, you know, that the arts is such an important bedrock of our community and certainly an economic driver year round. And, you know, I think any effort we can do to propel an industry and a portion of our economy that has been badly beaten by, by the pandemic, as you know, artists have had to change their, you know, their entire lives have been upended by the virus. And, you know, anything I think we can do to support the arts community should be welcomed. I am a user of the Core Calendar, which is a calendar that is organized by the Cultural Coalition. It pieces together all of the calendars from the major players sort of in the air, in the area, including the Chamber of Commerce, Sector and many of the other municipal events. It's a great way to stay engaged into knowing what's happening in your community. So, you know, as the mayor stated with Make Music Day, they just are such an integral part of, you know, many of our strong arts programings that we have to offer here. And they have certainly been impacted as well by the pandemic because, you know, when you consider Make Music Day, that is, and, you know, in indoor and outdoor activity. And this year, that had to change significantly because of the COVID-19 pandemic. So I do support Counselor Bordelon's motion as much as I would want to go, you know, ask for more. You know, we have to understand that there are other organizations throughout Groton in the area that do provide great services for Groton. But unfortunately, we can't give money to everyone. So I do support giving a little bit more. And with that, I yield the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Bumgardner. Any counselors who wish to speak for the first time before I go to second time speakers? Counselor Bordelon, you have the floor.
Once again, I understand as it was stated that it's other people's money. But I, I also benefit from other people's money in other towns in the surrounding area. I do not just sit in Groton and go to only events here. I benefit in surrounding towns like New London, Westerly, leave the state, you know, in Rhode Island to Stoning, to Stonington. And they all benefit from this program and the arts community. So it's not just what it does for our town. It's also the surrounding collaboration in New London County and in any of the 2022 towns that are affected. Some of the smaller towns are going to have even trouble giving $100 in comparison to what we could do. And so I don't know if the 250 kind of supports little concerts that other people go to outside of our town. It does increase foot traffic because it does provide, you know, these events in our area. And there are services here maybe that we have not tapped into that we maybe should start to utilize and collaborate more with and maybe get some more of these things up on our, our town page and utilize some of the resources at hand. But like I said, 750 is a great number. I just thought the 250 might just be another avenue or generator to really help a great organization as they do a lot for the community. Thank you.
And Counselor Obree is still out. She's having some trouble getting back in. So there is no further discussion. So we will vote on the first amended figure, which reads to recommend a resolution to approve a funding request from the Southeastern Connecticut Cultural Coalition in the amount of $1,000. I'm going to ask for you to raise your hands, please. So all those in favor, please raise your hand.
Melendez in favor.
Melendez, Franco, Bordelon, Bumgardner?
Yes.
Granatoski, all those opposed? Zepary, Heed? And no abstentions, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, that passes. Oh. Do we need six or five?
Six.
Five.
Five?
Six, sorry, sorry, six to vote.
Six to vote, six to pass, correct?
Five to pass.
I'm hearing the former Rules Chair saying six and the manager saying five. That's what I'm doing right now. This is when we need Counselor Parker. And remember, we're in committee, so we are not in council.
True. Under Rule 4, unless you have, but first of all, unless you have special rules for council, our, our rules apply to the council. Under Rule 4, quorum and vote, six members shall constitute a quorum. See, um, anything except for
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, five, five affirmative votes.
Five affirmative, very good. Thank you, Mr. Burt, for being so quick on that. So that passes five in favor to oppose, zero abstentions. Thank you. Okay, we are on to 2020-783 Safe Futures Funding Request. This is on page 113. Counselor Bumgardner?
I request a break.
One moment, please. Counselor Bumgardner has his hand up and I wanted to see if that was leftover or if he had something he wanted to say. Counselor Bumgardner?
Yeah, that was a leftover, my apologies.
Okay, that's fine. We only have two items left. We have a request for a break. Would you like a five minute break? Counselor Franco would like a five minute break. Counselor Heed agrees. All right, so it is 9:01. We will start again at 9:06. Thank you very much, 9:06, we'll start again. Thanks. From our briefing room. And we are on to item 2020-783 Safe Futures Funding Request, found on page 113 in your packet. Counselor Melendez will take this for us, please.
I make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve a funding request for, from Safe Futures through the Southeastern Connecticut Government in the amount of $500. So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melendez and seconded by Zepary. Counselor Obree, would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, I would like to say, first of all, I will disclose that I'm a member of the board of Safe Futures. No, I'm not. I got, I just got the two mixed up. Oh, God, what a night.
That's all right. Would you still like to speak and, on this item?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to remember it now.
That's all right.
But that's the women's and men's.
It is. Safe Futures is the women's shelter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I, I think five hundred dollars is actually a very small amount to give to a facility that does so much for people that are in need. I'm definitely in favor of this. Uh, if it was possible, I would move a larger sum. They definitely need the help. That's what I have to say.
Thank you. And I would like to make an amended motion um to increase the funding amount to one thousand dollars. To recommend to approve a funding request from State Futures through the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments in the amount of one thousand dollars. Moved by Granatoski and seconded by Obrey.
Yes.
And my rationale is that they are a very vital component of our community. And um there are members of the town that every year participate in um the walk that they have. And the walk was unable to happen this year because of the pandemic, and that's one of their major fundraisers. So that is why they are short somewhat. So I feel that anything we could do um to support um this organization and all that they do for women in our community, um, I think is a very, very good use of taxpayer funds. Um, so I will, that's my rationale for my motion. And I see Counselor Bordelon and then Heed, please.
Thank you. I also wanted to move that number, so I appreciate that because I think this is a another organization. Are they on our line uh under outside resources um in our budget season? Are they one of the?
I believe so.
Yes.
And what did we give them this last budget season?
I don't have the budget on me. Give me a few minutes, I might be able to find it.
Well, I'm looking on my thing really quick. I thought I had pulled it in um because what they proposed and what we gave them, I would love to. Great music.
Counselor Bordelon, did you have other comments? We have other counselors who were waiting in queue.
Um, John just said if we give him a minute, he's going to come back with the number. But if you want to move on, that's fine.
Well, we'll take the other counselors and we'll come back as soon as he has.
Issues, yes.
Come back to you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Counselor Heed?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, once again, they requested five hundred dollars. And I think that's the number that we should support. You know, I, I totally agree. This is a great organization and everybody wants to give more. But in my personal opinion, um, you know, this is during a pandemic. And I'll take my own example, my own experience as an example. I was out of work for two hundred and thirty-one days. I've gone back to work at a sixty-seven percent pay cut. So if other people would like to make a donation, I would strongly encourage them to make that donation. But in my case, I can't do it right now. So that's all. I'll be supporting the five hundred dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Counselor Bumgardner and Zepary. And Mr. Burt, when you have that number, just chime in, please. And we'll go back to you and Counselor Bordelon, then Counselor Bumgardner.
Definitely, um, you know, I would definitely align my remarks with um, you know, the mayors and Counselor Bordelons. Um, I think the number is an appropriate number. Um, the number moved by Mary Grantowski. You know, they serve, um, you know, their mission, I'm reading on their website. Um, they say future saves lives, restores hope and changes the future for those impacted by domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking and trafficking in Southeastern Connecticut. So clearly, this is a very serious mission um that this uh, you know, this organization um, you know, has in our um, you know, our region. Groton is certainly, you know, a larger municipality and certainly, um, you know, many women have benefited from, um, you know, their services at a time when they most needed it. So, you know, it is a number. Uh, again, you know, wish we, wish we could do more. Um, but I, I support the one thousand dollar appropriation from the town. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Burt, I think you have the number that Counselor Bordelon requested.
Yes, they had originally requested ninety-six hundred in the budget and it ended up being funded at ninety-five hundred.
Counselor Bordelon, did you wish to speak further?
No, I think that's um, I think that's great. And just the fact that um, you know, as was stated, uh, Groton falls right in the high-traffic ring because of the casinos and the metropolitan areas that we live in between. And um, just from my own volunteer experience with some of these types of organizations, not this one in particular, we in Groton, as much as we might not want to realize it, we are in a high-trafficking area. There's been many cases on the strip by Walmart where young girls have been found and some even, um, so I, I just think this is a really a high-needs priority. And it's happening right under our nose in our own community um on a daily basis. So I just, I can't stress the importance of making sure that we support this. Thank you.
Counselors of Perry?
I just wanted to say I agree a hundred percent with uh, Counselor Heed. They've asked for five hundred dollars because that's what they need to continue their work uh and to meet their goal. We're saying we're going to give them more than that gratuitously. It's not for something they need. We have a duty to the taxpayers of this town to only spend what is necessary to accomplish the goals that we've set. And this organization has said they need five hundred dollars from us. And we'll say, oh, we love this organization, let's give them a grand. Well, I don't think five hundred dollars is a tremendous amount of money to take from the tax budget. But the principle that we should provide funds that are necessary, not funds that we, we give because we have warm feelings about a group, but funds that are necessary for them to accomplish their goal. They've told us they need five hundred dollars from us. I think we should give them a five hundred dollars. I mean, the gratuitous elevation of requested grants by two hundred and fifty, five hundred dollars, in one case, nine thousand dollars a few meetings ago, is, is not in keeping with our responsibility to the taxpayers. We have, we have a duty to do what is necessary and to conserve their money insofar as possible. And these, oh, well, they're nice people, they do a good job. Let's give them more than they asked for is not consistent with our duty. So I am opposed to the amendment.
I would, I would like to speak um to, to that issue. The fundraising goal that they set is their annual goal. Um, as Counselor Bumgardner had stated earlier, we're in the middle of a pandemic. And one of the issues that is exacerbated when we are in lockdown is domestic violence. And so their mission has increased because of the pandemic. Um, so they're, they are serving more people than they would in a normal year. So they set their annual fundraising goals, but this has been anything but a normal year. And because of the circumstances, um, you will see an uptick in domestic violence cases. And these are people from our community. Um, these are residents of Groton that um need their services. And um, you know, government is here to, to help the people. And I think this is a small token of a small gesture that we can do to help um the women of Groton who might be in need of the services that Safe Futures offers. Counselor Obrey and the. Counselor, you're muted.
Counselor, uh, Mayor Granatoski, you were broken off in the second part. I think you were saying Counselor Obrey and Counselor Bordelon.
I was, and Counselor Obrey started to talk, but I think she's muted. Shall we go to Counselor Bordelon? Counselor Bordelon, go ahead.
Um, just align my marks with you, uh, Mayor Granatoski, these are taxpayers in our town. And as people have lost jobs, you know, women in our community are um, you know, at a higher risk of like, as was stated, domestic abuse and as a direct result of lack of funds and layoffs and um access to jobs and other various uh things that are happening. And, you know, youth that are being trafficked, you know, and that's an ongoing, everyday issue despite COVID. But that's even increased. An article that I was reading a couple of weeks ago, um, with students in young adolescents home, my parents are working and their access to um devices where there's not very little supervision. Most people can't afford childcare for age fourteen to eighteen-year-old children. And people are becoming victims to um online trafficking and things like that and, and, and all around all different areas. So I, I don't feel like this is a feel-good, oh, I like it. You know, I, I feel just as strongly about this as we just voted on how much to improve our sewer lines and uh other things for economic growth. I think as we grow as a community, we also have to support the people in the community. Um, so we, you know, that's all part of the whole collaborative effort of the community to make sure we're, we're looking at um not just the infrastructure, but the, the bodies that are actually in the town that we're serving and especially the women. Thank you.
Counselor Obrey, did you wish to speak on this?
Yes, I just wanted to mention, first of all, it's not just for women, it's for men and women. And the thing is that I think over the winter, unfortunately, we, we have a very difficult winter ahead of us. And the need for this group will probably grow immensely. So um, I, I understand what Counselor Zepary is saying, and I always appreciate his opinion. But I can't agree with it tonight. I think we should give the extra monies. So I would go for a thousand dollars.
Counselor Heed?
And just a quick point that Safe Futures sets up a budget. They have professionals that come up with budgets and they, they figure out what their expenses are going to be. They do projections, they do forecasting. Um, and, you know, that's kind of what I did in the hotels. So there, there are things that you do um that, you know, you set up goals and all that. So they asked for five hundred, they didn't ask for a thousand, and that's all. Thanks.
I'm just looking to see if any other counselors wish to speak. Okay, seeing none, we're going to vote on the first amended figure first, which is, uh, this is twenty twenty, seven, eight, three, Safe Futures Funding Request. The First Amendment um says to recommend a resolution to approve a funding request from Safe Futures through the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments in the amount of one thousand dollars. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Bordelon, Obrey, Granatoski?
Melendez in favor.
Aye.
Melendez? Opposed?
Uh, Bumgardner, yes.
Oh, Bumgardner's, yes? Opposed, please raise your hand. Zepary? Heed? Counselor Franco, were you a yes on that?
Yes.
And then any abstentions? Okay, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six in favor. Bordelon, Obrey, Granatoski, Melendez, Bumgardner, Franco, two opposed, Zepary and Heed, zero abstentions. The amended figure passes. Okay, we are on to twenty twenty sixteen, one, Tax Abatement Program for Surviving Spouse of a Police Officer. This was originally on page one fourteen, and then I believe Ms. Hilton sent out an amended um item for this because there was an error with the um one attachment. But I just want to note that there is um no motion that is included here. So this item is for discussion at this point. And I will go to Mr. Burt to um talk about the staff recommendation, please.
Sure. Um, as you remember, we, we received this request, it's been out there for a while. At least the beginning of the year, if not longer. But a spouse of a, I think it was a fallen police officer, um, had requested tax abatement. She lived in the city, was receiving a hundred percent tax abatement in the city for the city taxes. And then she uh moved to Mystic and is seeking uh, uh, tax abatement from the town. If you want me to take you through this real quick, but I'm really looking for some direction from the council.
If you could just walk through um the staff recommendation to.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Not do this, please. Thank you.
Um, generally speaking, I don't like doing ordinances for one request. Um, we haven't had any other requests out there. I mean, I certainly see, you know, the desire to do it, but just generally speaking, I don't typically like the policy of, of doing ordinances based on one request. Well, you know, for, for instance, there's other categories of things that veterans and others that maybe would, you know, spouses of fallen veterans, you know, there's other things that would have the same sort of hardships that don't get that same treatment also.
Thank you. And in um the packet, the um, it looks like what was attached to the adjustment was the city's ordinance for the exemption, correct? Is that what?
I think, no, it was actually the main policy, the main ordinance itself. What it was, was missing was the, on the last page, there's the income, um, the income guidelines that you can't be over uh four hundred percent of the federal poverty limit. The first version was missing that.
Okay.
Did you see that at J two?
Yes.
Or I two. Yeah.
Yeah. And also, um, what was sent with this was um a letter from um Chuck Stevens outlining some of the points that Mr. Burt had made. In particular, he referenced the fact that fallen veterans, um, surviving spouses do not qualify for any kind of exemption. Okay, so we will open this up for discussion. Are there counselors that wish to speak on this particular item? Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. Um, so as this is written, is this for a spouse of a, um, a an officer that dies in the line of duty?
Yes, and as well as uh fire.
And fire. And does that include, would it include like Navy, Police and Fire as well, military?
Well, that was one thing I was going to point out, if I took you through it. Right now it says any valid fire department. Um, I'd want to define what va, I don't like the word valid. I think that's too nebulous. I'd want to put Zach in, so uh open to guidance on that one from the.
Yeah, I, I mean.
Counsel.
I, I think there's military police that live here as well that also, um, I don't know, I, I guess I'm supporting women tonight. I just, you know, when you look at uh the active-duty military spouse of a fall, you know, of a fallen officer or, or fire or even, uh, you know, the police force, um, you know, there, there's a bit of a loss, you know, uh, not a bit, a, a large loss of, um, and I think, you know, as we had the presentation tonight, being a former military spouse myself, you talked about the whole family with the, with the um construction of that submarine monument and stuff and really supporting the whole family. Um, I think it's important that we do look at the whole, whole idea of the whole family and, you know, uh, when supporting not just the police officer, but also the family. Um, and I guess it's defined officer, uh, you know, does correction officer fall under that? I mean.
No, it'd be a police, only police officer.
And that's what I'm just, I'm just going down to trigger.
It's not allowed for, yeah, it's, it, the law isn't applicable to that.
Right, and I, I guess, um, I, I'm in fully support of something, um, any type of, um, I mean, a correction officer, uh, police officer, military, you know, like, I think it can be very cumbersome. We have correction officers that die in the line of duty or have been, you know, injured and have fallen, um, cops, you know, and I think the spouses of all of these um deserve some recognition. And sometimes, you know, they're, they're, they're laughed, you know, um, with, um, you know, it's not enough resources sometimes. And I think um it's important that we um support the, the family, um, especially if they um reside in our town. And I guess it, I looked at a few other towns. It, it, I mean, is it different if they move to our town? And let's say they're a fallen, um, their, their spouse of a, an officer, but they, he was. they're, they're a spouse of a, an officer, but they, he was in the line of duty in Fairfield, they lived in Fairfield and they moved to town of Groton, do we honor when they move?
No, it does not apply to, it only applies to departments within the town. They're the one, they were providing a service to our town.
And that makes sense. Okay. And then providing a service to our town and live in our town.
Right.
Right, I mean, just looking at our own police force, I mean, how many actually even live, John, in town of Groton currently?
No idea.
Yeah, I don't think it's a very high number from what I remember. I don't know, I just think it's important to really, when you're looking at supporting the police department, looking at the whole family and, I mean, I don't even know how many numbers, what our numbers are now and based on our officers that work for the town and live in the town, I don't even know how high that number is. So I guess more research could be done, but I do think it would be important to support the spouse of a fallen officer in line of duty. Thank you.
Counselors of Perry and then Obray.
There are statutes that recognize diseases of heart and hypertension and as work-related for policemen, firemen, and corrections officers. Anyone who dies with one of those conditions would be considered someone who died in the line of duty. Now we're expanding the number of widows that we would be providing veterans benefits for. Additionally, there's no provision in this to account for, well, I guess it has to be four times above, no more than four times above the poverty line. What's the poverty line now, about 25K?
Yeah, and this is at 400% of the poverty line, but if you're talking 100%, if your depends on your household size, if you're a household of one, the poverty line for 100% is 12,760, but when you're talking 400%, you're talking $51,040.
So there is some connection to economics. It does not consider the fact that we have people that work on our highway crews that are subject to some death danger when they're out on the road. They can be struck by a car, they can have a cave-in of, of a hole that they're working in, and their widows would not benefit from this kind of inordinance. We have, going beyond that, we have nurses and doctors and all kinds of healthcare workers who are subjecting themselves to potentially fatal infections by continuing their work in the presence of the present pandemic. And they're not benefiting, benefiting from this, but they're, they're taking those risks in service to the rest of us. I think that this, this type of inordinance is too restrictive. It's directed at only people who are related to police officers and firefighters. It doesn't cover other people who provide vital services to our community in, in risking their lives, not to mention all the sailors who go to sea on submarines. We, I, I, I just don't see this as fair and I don't see this as contained. As you know, I'm a proponent for tax abatements for elderly and for disabled, but that, that does encompass a large group and it, it wouldn't be a total tax abatement as this is. Well, it might be, depends on how we work it, but I, I just don't like restricting this to such a narrow group. Indeed, we owe a debt of gratitude to our policemen and to our firemen, but I, I think we should pay them an adequate salary, provide for reasonable retirement, and then that should be the limit of it. And any other abatements we give should have a much broader base.
We are on to Counselor Obray, please.
This particular situation came out of an officer being on duty for construction on a road and being hit and killed in the city of Groton. We have a little area there on Eastern Point Road that there's a dip and you really can't see what's in front of you and the gentleman was hit and killed. But I think that what this brings to us really is, I think we should look at the whole situation of what we're discussing right now. I think we should look at what we really may want to offer to residents of Groton and, and make this a bigger picture. I, I think we should do something, but I'm not quite sure at this point what it should be. I think it needs to be looked at further. And, you know, we've, we've asked a lot of questions that we don't have answers for. And I think we need to have some answers as to, you know, they have to live in the town, there are certain financial criteria, you know, because it, it is true, we have lots of people that are working for us that something could happen to them and we wouldn't want to exclude them because they don't fall into a particular category. If it's an accident, you end up with the agony of death, you want to do something for the people. But I think we need to, I think we need to answer some of these questions before we could even decide what we, we really need to do.
I would, Mr. Bird wanted to speak, but I just wanted to say one thing before I yield the floor. In January, on the 12th, we have a category of tax abatements coming up. And if you'd like, we could roll this in to that category and have a big-picture discussion of tax abatements and include this one in there. That way we could compare it with the other items that are being considered. So that's something you can keep in mind as we're going forward. Mr. Bird, you wanted to speak about something?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind people that you can't, you can only give abatements per what the law allows. So like, this one can't be expanded beyond, you know, too much, it can't go to other categories. So, but I, I agree with putting it in with those other abatements so we know exactly what's allowed. We can't define a new category ourselves.
Is, is there enough interest in pursuing further discussion that you want to carry this over until the January 12th, bigger discussion on tax abatements?
I think it'd be a good idea.
Any other, any other feedback on that? Would you, this would give people a chance to do some more research on their particular questions. Is it, okay, let's go this way. Counselor Heed, go ahead. Somebody's hand went up when I, I was going to go a different way. So Counselor Heed, go.
It's no surprise I'm not in favor of doing tax abatements and special treatment to people. I mean, I understand everyone's going through difficult times, but, you know, we live in a community and we all need to support each other and we all need to pay our way. And so that, that's where I am on this. Thank you.
Okay, is there, is there anybody who does not, well, besides Counselor Heed, does not wish to pursue this issue? Is there anyone else who objects to bulking this in with the bigger tax abatement discussion in January? Okay, so if there's no objection, what we will do is we will carry this over and Mr. Bird, add this in for, I believe it's January 12th. The January 12th meeting is where we have tax abatements on, scheduled for the agenda. And then what I would say is if individual counselors have particular questions, if you could put those in writing to the manager and he can see if he can get the answers to those questions. Counselor Boardalon?
No, I was just going to ask, yeah, and I think if there's more information, well, I have it here, of what the parameters that it can't be, you know, based on the state requirements.
What I'll do is I'll send you the, the actual statute.
Oh, perfect.
And just, I remember a couple of questions that came up last time, just to point out and answer them. I was asked of long-term partners, could, you know, without being married, could participate? They cannot. Chuck, do I have attorneys as well as can you do anything for renters? You cannot.
Okay. I guess the other thing is define a partner, I guess, is civil union count as, you know what I mean, we start to go down. And I think it's important that we recognize all types of relationships. So I guess, you know, if
You have to show a marriage certificate, so.
How far are yours, John?
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I would just encourage counselors, if you come up with other questions, you have some time, but the sooner you get them to the manager, the better chance he has of getting you good, good and thorough responses to your questions on that. So, so this is an item that will go forward on the COW for January 12th. Thank you. So we are on to six review of agenda items. Mr. Bird, do you have anything you wanted to review?
I do not.
Okay, we have other business next. Any counselors have other business?
Yeah, I'd like to take a moment if I can.
Counselor?
I wanted to apologize. I was playing with my computer when I was asked to give my report earlier on the beautification committee and I did not do it appropriately. So if I could make a correction, I wanted to thank Rachel for the fact that she really ignited our interest in the beautification committee and worked very hard and very diligently. And it was only because of personal family reasons that she really had to curb her involvement. But I personally, and I know there's many others, want to thank her because we wouldn't have it at all without her. And we look forward for the time that she could come back and be an active member with us again. So I just wanted to add that.
Thank you. Very well said, Counselor Obray. Any other business? Counselor Boardalon?
I just wanted to, in relation to one of our last meetings, just remind counselors that the chat box also pops up on the TV when you write comments in there. And so as much as we are talking about decorum and, and being respectful to peer counselors, it's important that we not only do it verbally as well as visually, but also in the text box. When certain counselors were speaking, one of the meetings, there were texts that went up like, "To what end?" or, so, you know, like, and I just think that comes across as rooted disrespectful and it did pop up on the screen. And so I just want to consider that we, when we're addressing the council, also that the chat box is also considered a, a place that should, you know, we should show our respect because it does pop up on the screen for folks to watch. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn by Zepary, is there a second?
Second.
Is that Obray?
Yes.
Moved to adjourn by Zepary, seconded by Obray. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? We're going to take that as unanimous. We are adjourned as 9:40, at 9:40 PM. Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody. Take care of yourselves, be well, wear your masks. Have a good night.
Thank you. Nice meeting.